It's six o'clock, obviously, everybody quieted down, so it must be six. Tonight is our regular scheduled city council meeting. We do have a committee of the whole meeting that we will hold after the council meeting tonight, too. I do call this meeting to order, and as always, let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, and we're going to ask Barb to read the Clerk's open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all meetings of the common council are open to the public. Prior notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so that citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And would you also take the oath?
Sure. Mayor Brian Smith?
Here.
Colin Dijkstra?
Here.
Lori Chestnut?
Here.
Paul Hagan? Henry Velicker?
Here.
Dave Peterson?
Here.
Paul Mayo?
Here.
Demetri Martin?
Here.
Corey Nagel?
Here.
Eric Olson?
Here.
Eight ayes, we have a quorum.
Henry, you feeling a little alone over there?
Yes.
All right.
[laughing]
And we also always introduce our staff, too, so I'll have Barb start the introduction, please.
Barb Nowak, City Clerk.
Aaron Johnson, City Administrator.
Eric Bailey, Library Director.
Jared Requieu, Community and Economic Development.
Stephanie Reif, Finance Director.
Justin Behrens, Director of Public Works.
Laura Colbert, Parks and Rec Director.
Brian Hozell, Chief of Police.
All right, and of course Josh is behind the scenes with us tonight, too. All right, let's move on then to agenda items. We have first up the consent agenda. This is where we take one motion and a second and vote on that for all the items that are on this consent agenda, unless you would like to see any one of those items moved to the regular agenda. If we have none, I would like to hear a motion to approve this consent agenda as printed.
Move to approve.
Second?
Motion by Olson, second by Martin, that we approve the consent agenda as distributed. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against, motion carried. Paul Hagan on that? So Paul, Paul, welcome.
Yes.
Paul, we didn't hear you during roll call, but welcome.
Thank you.
All right, then let's move down to regular agenda. Barb tells me what you have on here is what you, what we have for the night, so we'd again just be looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second?
Motion by Lori, second by Eric, that we approve the, the regular agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. All right, under announcements and correspondence, we have a presentation of a certificate of appreciation to Susan Wonderlike for her 15 years of service in the city. Susan works in, or Sue works in the, I didn't sign these, but Sue works in the Parks and Rec, the senior center in the Parks and Rec, and she's not here tonight, but Laura, if you would, appreciate you getting this to her and thanking her for sticking with us that long. Thank you. And then next up, we have a presentation of certificate to Elizabeth Kinnear for her five years of service in the city, and she works in the library in the exhibit room, is that correct?
That is correct, and Liz is here with us this evening.
All right. Oh, Liz, I'm sorry, missed you. Yeah, come on up.
So, all right. So we have a certificate of appreciation. This certificate is awarded to Elizabeth Kinnear in recognition of her five years of service to the citizens of Opaque since 9/24/2008.
No, that's right.
Eighteen, yeah.
Close enough.
That's okay, yeah. Well, you got an extra few years, yeah.
Not that old.
Right. Well, there you go. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
There you go, Liz. All right, and then we have public input. This is for non-agenda items. If anybody would like to speak to the city council on an item that is not on the agenda, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record, limit your time to three minutes or less at the podium. Any non-agenda items?
Mayor, this is Lori. Would I be able to have a couple minutes, a moment?
Can you get up to the podium?
I can hardly get up, period.
Go ahead, Laura.
Okay, well, I just wanted to take a moment to say, 50 years ago, my then-husband, my two-year-old daughter, and I moved into Opaque. I remember riding around the city with her on the back of the bike, learning all about the city. So, Opaque is very special. We have a very special bunch of unique people, and I love it here. So, the other thing I wanted to take a moment to do is to say thank you to everybody, holy man, everybody in this city has reached out. Thank you for your support to my family, my children, and grandchildren, and everybody, and also to me. It is just heartwarming to have, have a city like this behind you during a difficult time. So I thank you from the bottom of my heart, and I'm just going to keep coming forward. So, thank you again.
Yeah, Lori, thank you. It's really good to hear from you. You look great, actually. We're looking forward to seeing you in person again.
Well, 33 days in the hospital down in the Milwaukee area. Thanks for saying I look great.
Look at his smile. He's on the mend.
I don't even know how to respond to that, sorry.
Thank you, guys. Thanks, City Council. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, any other public input? Chief Hozell?
Yeah, just a reminder, this Saturday is going to be the Battle of the Badges down at Swan Park at 6:00. They switched it up a little bit this year. They're going to do a kickball game between Fire Department and us and the Sheriff's Department. So that'll start at 6:00 at Swan Park.
Nice.
And they'll have beverages and food there, also.
Sounds great. Sounds like entertainment, and the weather's going to cooperate for you, so. Good. Any other public input? Yeah, Colin, go ahead.
I don't think anybody's mentioned it. I think congratulations are in order for the Opaque Lakemen. I don't know if Dave has more to say about that, but they won.
They won?
Yeah. That's all, okay.
I think there was five straight grand championships. At any of the years they always had playoffs, he would be called, quote, "the grand champion." It is five years in a row, which ties the previous record. He's at six yet, so I guess they can go for that next year.
Man of many words, isn't he?
If I may.
Colin, thanks for remembering that, too, because that's really special to our community. All right?
They estimated 700 people in the crowd at the Lakeman game.
Wow. We need to add bleachers to your little... That's awesome. Anybody else? Any other great news that we have? All right, let's move on to new business. We have a request from Opaque Rotary to close East Fulton Street for Rocktoberfest. And Aaron, it looks like you're the guy on this.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Smith. So on page 57 of your packets, Council, you'll see a letter. It looks very similar to last year's request. I know my name's on this, but Barb Ladkey is the co-chair, or are you the straight chair? You're the chair of this event this year. Rotary does Oktoberfest. It's always been known as that. The last, this is the second year it's known as Rocktoberfest. It's one of their larger fundraisers. This year, looking to have it on Thursday, September, or I'm sorry, Friday, September 22. The tent would be set up during the evening of Thursday, September 21, and taken down on Saturday after the Farmer's Market. The Farmer's Market has been sent an email, and last year, they said it worked well. They actually were able to use the tent, so that's all good. There's a site map of the event that is also attached. There's a couple changes on there, but ultimately we're here because Rotary is requesting that the city close off East Fulton Street from 5:00 PM, and that should say Thursday, September 21 through the end of the Farmer's Market on Saturday, September 23 at approximately 2:00 PM. And because Barb is in charge of this, I'm sure she knows much more than I do. So Barb, anything that you'd like to
Barb, I'm really sorry. If you want to speak, can you step up? We're, we're on radio and TV and hard of hearing and all of those things.
I'm sorry, I wasn't sure I really wanted to speak, but I haven't talked to Arthur, the rental guy, recently, so I haven't confirmed the time they'll take the tent down, but I'll get on that. And I was going to also meet with Aaron to see if I can squeak any more space out, but that's all I have on that. I'm hoping, I saw how much room they used at Arts on the Square, and I was just wondering if we could have a little bit more space, but I know I can't really bring that up right now, so. Great.
Well, I'm happy to talk to you later.
All right, so their Rotary Club is just asking for a request to close off East Fulton Street starting on Thursday night, September 21, and to go through September 23. If you're okay with that, then we would need a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Chestnut, second by Martin, that we approve the closure of East Fulton Street for Rocktoberfest. Any discuss, I just like keep saying it. I'm going to say it all night, Rocktoberfest. All right, anybody else? Any comments? Let's do a voice. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. All right, we have, next up, Josh, you're going to have to come out from behind the curtain here. Accept bid from Venco Incorporated to construct two towers to connect, to connect the new public works facility to City Hall. Josh Warner.
Okay, so I believe tonight's going to be the single biggest ask of money I've ever made in my time here. We've got some opportunities with the new public works building. You know, previous, we've had all of our public work staff offsite at small little locations that we haven't invested a lot into for IT. They're just kind of standalone. They're not tied into any of our systems. We've got a lot of duplicate telecommunications expenses, et cetera. And knowing my entire time here, that at some point, we'd get a new public works building. It never made sense to invest money to update, you know, that stuff. And now the time is right to do so, to consolidate that, make improvements, share telecommunications resources, and a lot more. Our three main buildings, City Hall, Rec Center, and Police Department, are all tied together onto one computer network. We share all of our different IT resources. It's led to cost savings over the years, and those buildings were very easy to get connected back here. The new public works building doesn't present that same opportunity. It's going to be a bit more challenging to get connected, and more expensive to get connected back to this building, to get onto the main city network. So I'll just kind of go over a little bit rationale, talk about our options, and kind of where we ended up for tonight's recommendation. And we do have some representations from the company, Mike and Rudy, that we're proposing tonight. If you have any questions at the end as well about their proposal. So in organizations such as city government, schools, county governments, it's pretty common to tie all of your facilities together, to share these resources. The county, our county's done it. They've spent millions and millions on fiber connecting facilities all over the county, so this, you know, what I'm talking about tonight isn't at all unheard of. In the, in the packet in my memo, I detailed some examples. If we ran the new public works building as a standalone IT operation, the types of expenses it would incur over a 50-year life expectancy, that tonight's proposed solution would be to have separate servers and separate telecommunications expenses, et cetera. Over 50 years, that's 350 grand in just IT expenses that doing this would negate. By consolidating and approving tonight's proposal, IT staff is not maintaining a second duplicate set of IT systems. Everything from security to updates and patching to replacements, to data backups, we're maintaining one set of systems in this building, serving all departments. Our staff can move between our facilities, so Public Works can come to City Hall, City Hall staff can go to Public Works. They're going to have access to all the same resources. They can walk in with their laptop, connect to Wi-Fi, and have the same stuff. And then the new public works facility can take advantage of some of the things we've got built into our main city network, our backup internet connection, our backup firewall, our redundant server that otherwise they wouldn't have access to. So those are just some of the reasons you'd invest money to tie your buildings together like this. Last fall, Justin and I talked to a number of different experts, looking at what options made sense to try to tie this building together. It's, like I said, it's as easy as our other facilities, which was a couple hundred dollars in wireless equipment, done some towers and roofs, and you're done. And we never came to a really good conclusion which method was the best. We talked actually to the county's fiber company that they've worked with and got some really good information. We talked to WPS about what leasing polls would look like, and found out that was a lengthy process, and upfront, no guarantee on how much that could cost. We talked to a company that did towers, and then we also talked to the county about potentially leasing some of their fiber. It does run a small portion of the route between here and the new public works building. And we just didn't hit something, hey, this really makes sense. And I said, well, when you, when we do the proposal process, let's just lay all the options out there and let the vendors go through and propose what they feel might be the best for the city, because they're the ones that are going to have a better instinct on pricing and ideas as far as completing this. We've received two bids from this process, one from Venco Inc. and the other from Alexico. And I think our big look at these proposals was the total value and flexibility to the city. They included the upfront costs, what ongoing costs would be, the total life expectancy, and what, what options it gave the city. And we kind of drilled down to two options that we liked. One was going with the fiber from Alexico. It would have been, we would have proposed 100% city-owned from City Hall to the rec to the public works building. It would have been entirely underground, and then we would have leased a small strand from the county to get over to the wastewater treatment plant. And that option would have been about $164,000 upfront. And then the other option that stuck out, both companies proposed the exact same tower, same brand, same make, and Venco Inc. offered the best pricing on that one. One would go at City Hall, the other would go at the public works facility, and then we would install a fixed wireless link, just like what we use between our other facilities. And that came in at $189,000. And then we looked at what long-term costs and considerations could be. So for fiber, in our case, city staff would be responsible for all the locates of any underground fibers. So that's staff time, that's costs each year for paints, flags, all that sort of stuff. The fiber consultant we talked to said for the portion, for the amount we were looking to do, he'd budget five grand a year for maintenance, construction, you know, if there's breaks, that sort of stuff. You're not going to do that every year. You might go a handful of years with no issues, and then you could have one big problem, someone digs into it, and you have a very large expense. Small lease for the portion going to wastewater, and fiber has a lifespan generally of 25 to 40 years, and I'm going off the 40-year number, so some estimates on potential ongoing costs would be about $231,000 over that period of time, based on the information we were given. And that would bring the total cost of the fiber option to $395,000. As far as towers go, periodic inspections are recommended. The tower company I talked to recommended potentially painting it with galvanized paint about halfway through the lifespan of the tower to get more years out of it, to protect it. And then the fixed wireless equipment, you'd periodically replace. And looking at those options, around 60 grand for a 50-year life of a tower, coming out at about $257,000 total for that option. So some other factors, and we discussed, it's going to take a staff time from Justin's staff to locate fiber whenever the year's hotline is called in the vicinity of it. The fiber really doesn't do much else except connect a couple buildings together. We're not getting much more purpose out of it. And then we discussed the tower option. We've had issues in the past at the wastewater plant with SCADA equipment. They put up a tower, so this ensures our new public works facility's getting the best signal. They can also collating the SCADA equipment on the tower. City Council twice in the past few years has approved applying for grants to get a taller tower here at City Hall to help Opaque online. We're, next year might be the year we lose line of sight between here and the Shamble Water Tower, and that's 2/3 of our customer base. So we discussed those considerations, too. 180 grand is budgeted for this project. Two years ago, when I got pricing, things were 50% less than they are today. It went up, no surprise, but it went up that much. And upon discussion on all these options, Justin, Ralph, and I felt that the tower option provide the best value and the most flexibility for the city. So we're making the recommendation to award this project to Venco Inc. to construct two towers, one at City Hall, one at the public works facility, for $189,377, which is over budget. So furthermore, I'm proposing, since Opaque online would get benefit from this, that they would cover $30,000 of the expense of this project. And that would bring what's coming off capital, $159,377, considering no overages or contingencies that come up. So, tossed a lot at you. There was a lot in the packet. I'm happy to answer questions. Justin can chime in if he can offer anything. And we've got Venco Inc. on the Teams meeting as well.
Hey, so, I'll start. First question, you said you had budgeted $180,000, and it's, it's about 100, just over $189,000 for the, the tower project, but Opaque online's going to pay 30 grand towards that. Is there a reason why you're going below what you have budgeted for that amount?
I'm kind of basing it off the percentage of how much, so the tower at Public Works won't benefit Opaque online. The tower at City Hall will. It's kind of a percentage of how much of the equipment is theirs and how much is IT equipment. And I'm basing it off that to kind of make it fair for what online would utilize on the tower here. And it provides a little bit of relief to our capital budget.
Absolutely. That's great. And then my, my last question really is, is so, if you put the tower at Public Works facility, then they would connect to the sewer department through that tower?
Yeah. Yeah, so the tower at wastewater should see the one there, or it sees the Shamble Water Tower. So I've got a couple options to make that part happen, but between here and, you know, I've, I've been on the roofs of all of our buildings, I've been on the water towers, and there's no option with our existing infrastructure to tie Justin's new building to the city network. That's the tricky part on this, and that's why it's kind of pricey.
Okay. All right. Other questions? Yeah, Demetri, go ahead.
I just see that we've got two bids, and we try and get three generally. Is there, what would the feasibility of getting another bid on the tower?
It's a, you know, it's a sealed bid process, so I can't go out and solicit more. I made contact with four telecommunications companies that I've discussed pricing with in the past. One indicated they were not interested in bidding on this. The other one, kind of surprising who I thought would, never heard from them. I've emailed them twice. We advertised on the city website, and then Barb placed in the newspaper as well. So we tried to get out there best we can, but we can't force companies to propose on this either.
Anybody else? Questions? Go ahead, Colin.
Is the tower that's being proposed large enough to, to hold services other than Opaque, the city of Opaque, or for services we may need in the future? Is it, is it able to hold things, is it big enough, I guess, for 50 years of development?
So, what we did on both of this is we listed what equipment would go on it today, and then we asked for a percentage increase beyond that. So I feel pretty good about what it is, what, what got proposed. You know, we're not going to be leasing these out to cell phone companies or anything like that. It's not some big massive tower. We don't need that weight load, and majority of the equipment we're going to put on here, these aren't big, heavy items. So we feel pretty good about what we got back.
And then, if I may continue, the second question I had was, as you've described this, it sounds like the two tower options is got a significant long-term cost benefit in that it's not going to take as much city manpower. It sounds like for, for your department in particular, you wouldn't have to have another, or manpower, or hours used to manage both things. And for Justin's or the Public Works Department, they would not have to have manpower to, to do potholing or whatnot to, to expose these. If there's other, the cabling, if there's other, is that correct?
So the, I think the biggest labor thing would be doing the locates, and I don't know if Justin can chime in how often something like that could happen, but that would probably be the biggest as far as ongoing labor.
Yeah, we assume locating, I guess, this line along the entire path could occur anywhere from six to 12 times a year easily. It's anytime somebody wants to do something with landscaping on their property, they have a lateral issue, sidewalk replacement. So I mean, there could be some years where it's pretty light, some years where it could be pretty intense.
So those are all things that, that would benefit going with the tower option. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, it's not saying that there'd never be any maintenance or something that has to be done with the tower, but, you know, overall, comparing the two options, it was considerably less.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Henry, go ahead.
Just a couple comments. We, we have to have IT support at our new public works facility, so we have to have an option. Number two, I think the towers is something our staff is very familiar with, with Opaque online. So I think the confidence level of them being able to take on the maintenance and be frugal about it, but also realistic is, is there. And then I just comment, I, knowing how Josh approaches things, I think it's a very thorough analysis. So if council's a little worried about two bids, I'm pretty confident that the staff working together did a nice job in evaluating the options. So I feel pretty comfortable with your recommendation.
Thanks, Henry. Corey?
So when the new public works facility, when those bids were sent out, the final cost and everything, was, was this part of that final cost, or is this separate?
This is a separate project. It's a separate project in the capital budget for this year as well.
Okay. So are we being asked to go over budget, or is this something that we've planned for?
So I'm asking, I guess, the total cost of the project, I'm asking to go over budget, but we would be utilizing Opaque on, online funds to bring it under budget as far as the capital budget is concerned.
Okay. So the, explain, though, that it's not part of the public works, I think that's what he's asking, and...
Yeah, it's, it's sep, it's separate in the capital budget from the public works building. This is a separate project.
But we did budget for this.
Yeah.
It's just that it's over budget, and you're finding a way to, to get it within budget.
Yeah, because costs have gone up a lot more than I thought they would in two years.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Hey, can you, not to put a damper on any of this, but can you give us the downside of using towers versus using cable?
I think the couple downsides on that is the fibers literally, you know, and I included the rec center on that. If we're going to run the path from City Hall to the building, it's going right past the rec center. So that was part of the proposal process, was companies to also tie in the rec center. So literally, that long piece of cable from this building to Justin's new building is, has one purpose. It's tying three buildings together. It's not doing anything else. It's not helping Opaque online. It's not helping... helping WAPAC online. It's not helping, he, he may still need a short tower like the one out back now at his building for the SCADA equipment. That's a possibility. So we're not getting multipurpose out of it, and the increased labor that we talked about with locates and fiber is great until something disturbs it, whether it's Mother Nature, someone digging into it, maybe a major road project that you need to facilitate moving some of it. And then you've got some pretty high costs that's almost guaranteed we're going to have to hire out at some point. So those are, I guess, some of the downsides of going with it.
Okay. Dave, go ahead.
I see on page sixty-four, Josh put out the pros and cons of the tower. And I would just have a little concern with the aesthetics of it. Josh seems to like towers, which is fine according to his notes.
So I've got a, I've got a photoshopped image if anyone wants to see what it potentially could look like here.
I think by looking at your diagram, it would be placed on the parking lot side, not on, not on the main street side, so I don't want to mess too much more with that, the front side, the greenery and all that. I don't want, we got a lot of stuff altered already, and I think if it goes in the back, it'd be just fine.
If anyone really wants to see what it potentially can look like, I can hook up and show it, but.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, so Josh is recommending that we go ahead with accepting the bid from Vinco Incorporated to construct two towers and to connect to the two Public Works facilities, where it costs not to exceed a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three, seventy-seven, and thirty thousand dollars of that would just come out of the cash reserves in the WAPAC online account. Anybody like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Hold on a second. Motion by Velicker, second by Peterson, that we approve the, this bid. Any discussion, any further discussion? Barbara, call the roll.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Colin Dextrow.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Laurie Chestnut.
Aye.
Cory Nagel.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Trying to outdo Jared tonight. You're up again. You've got new fiber, or a new upgrade for Spectrum.
Yep. All right. Thanks, everyone. And just Mike Rudy, if you're on the call, thanks for joining. Sorry, we didn't have questions, and we'll be in touch soon. Yeah, so the next item, we are looking to double our bandwidth from Spectrum. Right now, we're presently with one gigabit fiber service. We're looking to go to two gigabit fiber service. This one's really easy. It's a price increase of seventy-four dollars a month. And it would be a three-year agreement, so I'm just looking for council approval to take action to enter the city into a new three-year agreement with Spectrum.
Move to approve. Second.
Second.
Motion by Mayo, right? Or Martin, I'm sorry. Motion by Martin, second by who? I'm
You can go to Laurie.
Laurie Chestnut. All right. They're coming from all over. To approve this entering into a three-year agreement with Spectrum for upgrading to two gigahertz fiber internet. Any discussion? Barbara, call the roll.
Colin Dextrow.
Aye.
Laurie Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
I'm sorry, I had a question.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. Did you have your hand up?
Sort of.
Can we?
It says, okay, it says that it was, I believe, two thousand, three hundred and ninety. I'm trying to see, but it, it seemed like it was more than seventy dollars a month. So it said it was
I'd probably, I'll, I'll interrupt you and just answer where you're going. I probably made this memo more confusing than it needed to be. I was just illustrating earlier this year, their price was higher than it is right now. So if we would have made this upgrade back in February or March, it would have been twenty-three ninety-nine a month, and Spectrum recently revised their pricing, which we found out a few weeks ago, and it's now nineteen ninety-nine a month. I just wanted to illustrate by waiting half a year, we got a much better deal.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Paul?
Yes.
Probably added some confusion.
Well, you explained it. You're up for voting. Do then, Paul.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Cory Nagel.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, Josh, thank you. I think Josh failed it. We had a discussion earlier today about this, but he did fail to say that what this will do is it will give more bandwidth to our current customers, and I wanted to bring that up, and I just forgot.
So we've got one more equipment upgrade to make on the network. We need this upgrade to happen, and then we're going to be upping the speeds on all of the packages WAPAC online offers at no extra cost to our customers. We're going to finally be at the place to make our next round of upgrades.
Great. All right. Thanks. All right, and next we have resolution number fifteen forty-eight. This is authorizing cost share grant from Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. Justin, you're up.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I have a memo on one seventy, seventy-one, excuse me, preceding the resolution, and then a figure. So this is for the Urban Forestry Grant Fund Program. So the city's been really successful in getting this grant in the past, and we're going to apply for it again. The applications are due in October, October second exactly, and we need this resolution passed prior to. What the resolution does is basically promises to the DNR that it's a cost-sharing grant, so we'll take up to fifty percent of that cost share. It gives me, the Director of Public Works, basically the right to, to follow through with all the administrative items as applying for it, doing all the administrative stuff as, as far as submitting of invoices and reports, and then getting the reimbursement back from the DNR. This program has changed a little bit. They are looking for more unique projects. They're keying on education and then developing more cooperation within the community. And we keyed on a project which we think definitely does that. So the figure which is showing on one seventy-three, Aaron, if you could scroll there, please, shows what we're up to. Out at the Eco Park, we have a very new neighborhood out there. We have a few trees that have been planted prior to twenty-twenty. We've been trying to increase the tree density along this underutilized trail on the last few years. And then with this grant, what we're proposing to do is up to sixty trees, which would be in that southwest corner there, finalize that trail, and then include that in the educational programs at the Eco Park. I guess as our planting and forestry program, the neighborhood we plan on doing in a couple of years, but that's separate from this, this application, this ask. So besides planting trees and getting a cost share, this would give a huge benefit to the park in that neighborhood, kind of fill it in, make it much more beautiful, provide the stormwater benefits, and also hopefully a noise break from the highway there. So if there's any questions, I'll certainly take them, but I'm looking for approval of resolution fifteen forty-eight.
Anybody have any? Go ahead, Colin.
Move to, oh, okay.
My question was, are you, you had said about a windbreak. Are, are you specifically, I don't know what the term is, picking or asking the RFP to include evergreens or, or year-round pine trees or whatnot, something that's not going to lose its leaves, and so that'll be a, a good sound break the entire year?
We have a variety of trees called out in the RFP. They're mostly deciduous trees, so typically no, but we can prioritize some of those as we move forward.
Okay. Is it a requirement for the, the grant, that it be the deciduous trees as well?
No.
Okay, so we could use evergreens if we saw the fit?
Correct.
Okay. I would, I would encourage everyone to use as many evergreens as possible there to kill the noise from the, the highway. Specifically that amphitheater, I guess you call it, I don't know what you'd say, that's in the Eco Park is almost unusable for anybody because of the noise from the, the highway. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I just said, of course, you have jets taking off on the others. Yeah. Any, any other questions or comments? We're looking for a motion to approve resolution number fifteen forty-eight.
Move to approve fifteen forty-eight.
Second.
Motion by Dextrow is second by Martin that we approve resolution number fifteen forty-eight. Any discussion? Barbara, call the roll.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Cory Nagel.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Laurie Chestnut.
Aye.
Colin Dextrow.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, and Justin, you're up again. Wastewater Treatment Facility Plan Review.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. My memo is on one seventy-four, one seventy-five. I have Ryan Yens from Strand Associates here tonight to help with presentation. This is our wastewater treatment facility, facility plan review. So back in January, you authorized going into contract with Strand to update our treatment facility plan. The last plan that we've been working off of is from nineteen ninety-seven. We are required to have one per DNR code, and it also is too old. It actually spelled out a twenty-eight, twenty-year age life on it. So with that authorization, we began working on this plan quickly. We had a number of meetings, number of draft reports that have, we've been working on throughout the year. And basically Ryan is here now to kind of give a presentation on what we've been working on. We will need a action on it by, I guess, by the end. Basically, to boil it down is authorize us to finalize the report, and then we will submit to DNR for their review and approval, or to make some sort of changes. And typically, that would be like a major change, but I think Ryan's going to speak on that now.
Sounds good. Thanks, Justin. Aaron, do you mind putting, pulling up the presentation? As Justin mentioned, we've been working on a wastewater facility plan for, for your guys' facility. The latest facility plan is, is, is becoming dated, and the reason that the DNR requires these facility plans to be in place are so that it gives them, as the regulators, a chance to see what plants are doing to make sure they're not putting in some major capital improvement that would be, would not meet their permit requirements from a, a treatment standpoint. The first thing that we do in the facility plan process is to look at the influence flows and loads, compare, and compare that to the current wastewater facility. So this is essentially what's coming into the treatment plant. We should mention that this is a twenty-year document, so we're looking at, you know, flows from twenty-twenty-three to twenty-forty-three based on Regional Planning Commission data and Department of Administration data. Take home points from that slide, if you can stay on it, Aaron, is that the chart shown on the left are the, the treatment facilities' influence flows, and the orange horizontal line is what your design capacity at the, the plant is. And the table on the right is the nutrient loadings that are being compared to what you're currently seeing and what that design capacity is. And the flows on the left are much closer to the design rating than the nutrient loads. For example, the BOD is less than fifty percent of the rated design capacity of the plant. So that was one of the discussion points in our meetings was whether or not to, to keep your design loadings to have space for future expansion, or to potentially reduce that if, if needed to meet future permit limits. The recommendation is to maintain the existing flows and loads as long as possible. Excellent. Just a general overview of the wastewater facility. There's two sides to the, to the treatment facility. There's the, the liquids, which is treating, which is more associated with your flow, and the solids, which has to do with the, the biosolids that are separated out from the liquids before it's discharged back to the, to the river. There are several processes identified on this, on this graphic, but flow is pumped from the service building into preliminary treatment, where it flows into the primary clarifiers, where solids are settled out before aeration basins for biological treatment. That's to take care of that BOD that we were talking about earlier. Following biological treatment, it goes to the secondary clarifiers on the far north end of the plant, and then seasonally is disinfected to meet their permit requirements, and that's being done with chlorine right now. On the solids end, the plant has anaerobic digestion facilities, which you see on a number of farms if you're driving around, to stabilize the biosolids. And then the plant also thickens that biosolids where it's stored in the liquid sludge storage tank on the far south side of that picture, where it's stored before it gets hauled to, to land application for beneficial reuse. The capacity and condition assessment is, I would say, generally a, a good thing. The city is, the, the plant is adequately sized to meet these future flows and loads. This, this graphic shown here outlines the processes based on, on how that capacity assessment went. The green boxes meet your capacity. The red one in the service building, we're going to talk about first, is probably the, the highest priority item at the treatment facility. And then the preliminary treatment and clarifiers are, are in the, the the yellow because they're, they're in a medium concern, and the reason we did that is because you're likely not going to need to do something from a permit standpoint. But the DN, it is something that the DNR may raise some concern over with the submittal. Next slide. First thing we'll talk about is a common improvement recommendation, so that includes the influence pumping, screening, and disinfection. This slide talks about the influence pumps, which was the red box, or the one that's likely needs additional capacity. We have two photos on this slide. There are two sets of influence pumps that pump raw wastewater, raw sewage to treatment. The two inclined screw pumps shown on the top left are much older and original to the plant, and then the picture on the right shows three pumps that were recently modified by plant staff to supplement influence pumping. According to DNR, you're likely going to need additional capacity as these screw pumps are becoming outdated, and so the recommendation is to replace these screw pumps with a submersible pump station in that same location. The capital cost there is four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Additional common plant improvement recommendations are screening and disinfection. So on the, the top right picture here, we show the, the influence screens at the treatment facility. The one on the right, the screen on the right, is an older, larger screen that is, I think, over twenty years old, passes useful life. The plant installed a, a, the screen that's shown on the left in two thousand and twelve to in, improve treatment performance. However, that one does not have sufficient capacity on its own to meet the DNR code. So the recommendation here is to modify the screening process as your older screen becomes obsolete, so as you're not able to get parts or it's not functioning properly. And the capital cost for screening modifications is slightly over one million dollars. On the disinfection side of things, I mentioned you guys are currently using chlorine, which is, you know, a, a chemical use and is, has additional safety concerns compared to a newer technology in UV disinfection. UV is a pretty standard disinfection technology nowadays. UV is a pretty standard disinfection technology nowadays. However, it's not a requirement at this time for the DN, that facilities disinfect with UV. So the recommendation here is to upgrade to UV at a later date as it does come with a relatively steep capital cost of two million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Another process that plant staff wanted us to look at was the grit removal. Picture of this plant's existing grit removal tank is shown in the photo. Grit removal is not a required process, but it's used to protect your downstream, downstream equipment, pumps and other equipment there. Again, this technology, aerated grit removal, is becoming on the obsolete end of things. But we did evaluate the status quo option versus two different technologies. And the result of that evaluation was to maintain the status quo. Upgrades were gonna cost in the range of one point eight to two point three million dollars. And we estimated that that would only save the plant about twenty thousand dollars a year in operation and maintenance. Biosolids disposal is becoming increasingly difficult and costly due to land availability and regulations. The state of Maine, for example, has put a moratorium on land application of biosolids. And if that were the case in Wisconsin, the city's biosolids costs would increase substantially as they would need to go to a landfill or, or some other location. And the city currently does a great job of biosolids disposal. You guys have a good amount of land to, to spread on. But we did evaluate two different levels of increasing performance against that status quo, and those include de-watering, which, so for, you're currently, your biosolids are currently about three percent solids and ninety-seven percent water. The de-watering step would be about twenty-five percent solids and seventy-five percent water. And the last alternative would be de-watering, followed by sludge drying. And that would put the city at about ninety percent solids and ten percent water. So the main benefits of that is the volume reduction and less material to have to dispose of if things like PFOS is a buzzword that people hear nowadays, if that becomes, you know, more of an issue, that would come into, into play. So the recommendation is just keep doing what you guys are doing. Lastly, on the evaluation side was the phosphorus. Phosphorus was the big driver for this facility plan. And this facility plan evaluated tertiary filtration, as well as watershed alternatives for phosphorus compliance. The watershed alternatives are a little bit more abstract in the fact that the rules and regulations are a little bit more undefined, and you're essentially trading phosphorus that you would be discharging at treatment facility to phosphorus that would be discharged into the same watershed at, say, a farmer's field or other surface overflow type of a thing. There's two alternatives for that right now. The multi-discharger variance, which would be about forty-one thousand dollars a year that the city would be paying the county for phosphorus treatment. And the second would be water quality trading, which is significantly more expensive at a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars a year. The downside of the multi-discharger variance is that it's only currently approved to two thousand and twenty-seven, and there's no guarantee that it gets approved for another five years. Essentially, any of the watershed alternatives would be pushing a capital, a large capital project down the road, which certainly has benefits. But the capital cost of tertiary filtration is a little bit north of twelve million dollars. So the facility plan is recommending the multi-discharger variance and to optimize during the compliance schedule, which we'll talk about on this next slide. This phosphorus compliance schedule in the upcoming permit at the wastewater facility is gonna be critical for the future of the wastewater facility. The permit expires at the end of September of next year. The Upper Fox and Wolf River TMDL, which is a mass limit, has been approved by the US EPA and is, will be instituted in the, the city's permit. So the WPACA effective limit is going to be roughly zero point two milligrams per liter of phosphorus, which is gonna put the city right on the edge of that capital project or, or watershed alternative that we talked about. The key part of that permit reissuance next year will be and the expectation of a seven to nine-year compliance schedule to meet that limit. And that'll require four reports followed by implementation. So four reports of optimizing your current system, identifying or recording how that optimization is done, and then coming up with the preliminary and final compliance plan, followed by implementation would be the, the schedule over that seven to nine years. Summary and next steps is that there's, there's minimal immediate capital projects. The influent pumping would be the most important, so that's, that's an overall positive thing for the wastewater facility. This report is, is for a, a twenty-year plan, as I mentioned earlier. So we typically would recommend completing a larger capital project if necessary, following the phosphorus compliance schedule. So if you needed to implement something with phosphorus, that would be a good time to catch up on maybe the screening and influent pumping or, you know, any other upgrades that the, the city would wanna do there. And then, as Justin mentioned, we would finalize this report and submit to the DNR for approval.
You're up.
Back to me. Well, this is time for questions. Also note that Jesse Landry, our wastewater superintendent, is in attendance, rocking the standard green wastewater shirt. So I wear green as well, annoyingly, and we're talking about wastewater all tonight, so.
I didn't get the memo, evidently.
You are a fashion model, Justin. Anybody have any questions? Henry, go ahead.
Stuff is complicated.
Yeah, understood.
We're gonna talk about capital planning. Is there any, is the screw pump project in, in the foreseeable capital plan? Has, and then second part question, have you, it looked like in our audit, we're at two point four times rate of return on our sewer, you know, income. So it looks like we might have ability to issue debt in the sewer fund to handle some of these costs. Were they involved in your discussions on them?
Not this, not for this plan, no. So the first question is, that is not in the plan right now because we just got all this information not too long ago. We have other projects that we had in there that we shifted based on the information that we got from this plan from Ryan. And as far as the capital and the borrow numbers, we will be talking about that, and I'll rely more on Baird for that, but it's my understanding we do have some capacity. We can shift some projects in or move them around and make some adjustments, so.
Yeah, without maybe a rate increase. I guess I have one last question. The phosphorus, going back to the slide on the permit, MPDS permit, we're at the limit now of the, the parts per million on the phosphorus?
Right there, there you go.
Yeah, or is that where we're at right now?
Nope. Right now, your phosphorus limit is significantly higher than this. It's like one milligram per liter. And in your upcoming permit, it's going to stay at one milligram per liter, but it's going to say, hey, you're going to have this new limit in your upcoming permit term and in these, in the seven to nine-year compliance schedule. You need to figure out how you're going to meet it. And so you wouldn't expect the plant, we wouldn't expect the plant to be able to, you know, get to a, the target limit as is. But the first couple of years will spend trying to optimize that existing facility to, to get as close as possible where maybe additional chemical polishing could, could occur to reach the limit or, or like I said, those watershed options to.
I don't wanna dominate, but I have another one.
I know you have a stronger wastewater background than maybe some of the other.
I don't know, I just, I'm curious because there's this policy debate going on, and we know agriculture creates most of the phosphorus problems, and municipalities are getting dumped on to deal with it, no pun intended. So what's that landscape look like? And it would be maybe we renew in a year, we can take little baby steps the first two or three years, and maybe something good shakes out on the policy side of this. So municipalities aren't burdened with all of this.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the hard part with, with that is that the, you know, there's really not a, the DNR doesn't have any control over the agriculture side of things. And so the, the water quality trading approach is, is the DNR's way of trying to incentivize the treatment facilities to work with the farmers where the, the city and the treatment plant would potentially pay for a, a farmer to have some sort of erosion control protections in place on their fields so that they would, in theory, be discharging less phosphorus to the, to the river. But, but yeah, I mean, that's, that's a good point is, I mean, I think that the longer that you guys can, can push a capital project down the road, the more clear the regulatory picture will, will be.
Yeah, we do cropping agreements still, right?
Correct.
So does that look different in three or four years? Pay, we might be cheaper to give somebody a hundred grand to do their deal on their property than it is to.
Yep.
You know.
Yeah, you're right.
Complicated.
It is.
Anybody else have any questions? Justin, really, I, from you going through this report and so on, what do you get out of this?
I get out of it, it was great to go through because we had some projects between Jesse and I thought we were gonna have to do. And seeing some of the big numbers, we know, like, we can put those off. There were some other ones where we thought, like, these might be really important. And then again, on the flip side, like, okay, we should do these. So it was, it was great to go through this, have an updated plan, and then get a better grasp on some of them larger dollar amount projects. And then seeing, like, some of this where we know we can have ten years to plan for it is a huge relief. Knowing we can start on it now and, and get it accomplished hopefully in that ten-year range.
Great. Okay. Any other comments? So Justin is asking that council authorize Strand to finalize the report and then submit it to the W, to the DNR to, for final approval and adoption. I didn't hear anybody that wanted to see any adjustments to what the recommendation was, so I would say that that would be the motion.
I would move to make that motion.
Second. Motion by Olson, seconded by Velicker, that we approve authorizing Strand to finalize reporting to submit to the DNR for final approval and adoption. Any further discussion? Colin, go ahead.
I, I guess in, in Justin, your memo, it, it said you're seeking some input on the following major topics: biosolids, phosphorus, prioritizing future projects. Have we given that to you?
Well, hold on a second here. So is, do you, Colin, do you think this is gonna be part of the motion? And if.
That's a good question. I, I guess probably not.
Yeah, but it, it's something that we probably need to talk about, and maybe that's.
I think I have an answer. If.
Okay.
Aaron, could you go to the final slide, second to last slide, whatever, when I was of Ryan's presentation here, not that one, that one? Yep. So that's, that's the recommendation, which basically mirrors what the mayor had said with the first action. Approve as is, because what we have put together for this plan is, is exactly what Ryan outlined. We have some minor things we need to make improvements on, but these, those major projects, the ten-plus million dollar ones are way out into the future. If you, you could say something like, no, we need to prioritize phosphorus now, and that would then change the action on the floor.
Okay, thank you.
I also think that that was part of, like, th- those items that Justin mentioned were what was evaluated in the plan, right? That was kinda what you'd meant there.
All right. Anything else? Barbara, call the roll.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Laurie Chestnut.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, yeah, thanks for coming. Jesse, we, we're reluctant to allow you to get up here and speak. Are you okay? All right. Well, thanks for coming tonight. Appreciate that. All right, next up, we have license report number sixteen thirty-nine. You can see that on page one seventy-six of your packet. We are just looking for approval of that license report.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, seconded by Hagan, that we approve license report number sixteen thirty-nine. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, no?
Aye.
Against, no? Motion carried. I think that's the first time we've had a motion and a second by somebody who's remote.
Yeah.
Interesting. Yeah. Next up, we have, you know, our thirty-minute discussion, and we, Aaron and I talked, and we thought the best place to do the, to do the audit presentation would be under this area. Are you okay with just going straight into it? We could take a break after we finish the council meeting before we, before we get into the committee of the whole? Or would you like to take a small break now?
I need a small break.
All right, well, let's, let's take, let's take a five-minute break, and, and then we'll go into that. So we'll stand at recess for five minutes here. All right, well, let's let's take a let's take a five minute break and and then we'll go into that. So we'll stand at recess for five minutes here. Big words tonight, let's matriculate back to our.
Oh, my gosh, did you just look that up?
Yeah, it's on my phone. Word of the day.
What'd he say?
What's that? Did they play that? Giants are up two, not. But no. Oh, Cory, really? Is there a reason why you're coming early? You like from Chicago? I have to tell you, I like Chicago. I just don't like the culture of the bear. All right, we are back in session here and we've kept Jay around here long enough tonight, so we'll. Aaron, you want to just introduce Jay Bennett and what's going on?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Smith. At the podium is Jay Bennett. Jay's our our lead working with us through our audits and has been for a number of years. Jay is here tonight to just take us through a presentation to hit on the highlights of the audit of the two thousand twenty three fiscal year, which is the annual year as well. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Jay and Jay, you tell me when to turn the slides.
Sounds good. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Just moving on to page one, as Aaron said, you know, we performed financial statement audit for the city as of December thirty first, twenty twenty two. Your calendar year end, so that's it covered January through December. That financial statement audit, we issued an unmodified audit opinion, which is the highest audit opinion that you can get. Other types of audit opinions would be an adverse or disclaimer of an opinion. Again, everything was fairly presented to the best of our knowledge. Management reviewed financial statements and adjusting journal entries before they were issued and approved them. There's also in addition to the audit report, which I think you have in the council documents, was about seventy five pages. There is a separate audit communication, required audit communications to city council and management. I'll go over some of those recommendations at the end, but there are two documents that were issued. In addition to doing the audit for the city, we also prepared some regulatory reports for the city. One is the water utility. It's the annual public service commission or PSC annual report. It's required by the water. It's a compliance report. And then also for the general and utilities, there's a Wisconsin Department of Revenue Municipal Financial Report, Form C that is required to be filed each year. That's kind of how the city gets a lot of their state aids, general transportation aid, those types of things as well. And that was prepared. And in addition to that, for all the TIF districts that you guys have, there's an annual TIF report that's due. Department of Revenue also, and those were prepared as well. Moving on to page two. Some financial highlights. They're really at the top. Again, general fund or governmental funds, which is a modified basis of accrual accounting. You reported overall increase in fund balance of roughly almost six point three million, six million, two hundred forty nine thousand, six sixty two. The funds in some individual individual funds, excuse me, the general fund had a net loss this last year of almost a hundred ninety thousand, one hundred eighty eight, one hundred and eighty nine thousand, oh eighty seven. Debt service had a pretty good increase this year, nine hundred and sixty nine thousand, four forty nine. A lot of that increase is coming from debt service at advanced funds to several TIF districts. And with the close out of those TIF districts, there was enough money left to pay the debt service fund back. So that's why there's a large increase in debt service fund for this last year. Capital improvements had a net income of roughly six point three million dollars. How it works for your modified accrual financial statements when you issue debt, that is considered revenue. So this last year, you issued roughly eight million, four hundred fifty thousand dollars of debt, which increased the fund balance this year. It'll be spent on future capital projects that you guys have been talking about tonight. TIF four had a net income of forty three thousand, two ninety three. And then the non-major funds had a net loss of eight hundred and eighty thousand, two oh four, mostly due to the TIF districts and transfers out when they were closed. And paying back some excess amounts as well. Overall, the general fund had favorable variances when you compared the budget to actual. There is an exhibit in the audit report, exhibit B one, which is on page sixty two of the audit report, if you wanted to look at any of those comparisons, just for the general fund. Water utility had a net income or net increase in position of two hundred and twenty seven thousand, two fifty eight. That's a net income. Sewer utility had a net increase in net position of a hundred and fifty three thousand, six twenty two. And the telecommunications or online utility had an increase in that position of forty six thousand, two twenty one for two thousand twenty two. Last time the water rates were increased by simplified water rate case with the public service commission was effective January twenty two of two thousand twenty three. Talk a little bit more about the water utility at the end. So kind of in summary there, the governmental funds had roughly a net income of six point three million and the proprietary funds all combined had a net income of four hundred and twenty seven thousand for this last year. Fairly well overall. Moving on to page three. Trend in general fund balance. So this is a five year trend in your general fund balance from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty two. You see at the end of two thousand twenty two, you had roughly a general fund fund balance of one million, nine seventy four, four ninety one. Pretty comparable over those last five years. It's about a little bit higher than what it was in two thousand eighteen. But there was a little bit of slight increase in those last few years. Again, this last year, you had a hundred and eighty nine thousand dollar loss, and that's why the fund balance came down. There are, there's a bar chart there right below that, kind of gives you what non-spendable fund balance is. That's basically prepaid, advances, those types of things. That stayed pretty consistent. It's a hundred and sixteen thousand at year end, twenty twenty two. And then the unassigned fund balance was eight hundred or one million, eight fifty seven, seven twenty five. Kind of has stayed, again, pretty consistent over the last five years. Hasn't changed a whole lot. Middle of the page, the city does have a fund balance policy that requires your unassigned fund balance to be maintained between twenty and twenty five percent of the general fund budget each year. And the next part of that page, the bottom part of that page, you know, tends to show you how that is compared to your policy in the last five years. You can see in two thousand twenty two, the total general fund unassigned fund balance was twenty four point seven percent of the general fund budgeted expenditures, which is right in line with the general fund fund balance policy of twenty to twenty five percent. Again, your policy states that if you get below or above it, you're supposed to correct it within a certain time period. Any questions on fund balance at all for the general fund? Moving on to page four, again, just a three year comparison for total general fund revenues for the last three years. Again, twenty twenty two was five million, nine seventy seven, really close to twenty twenty one, which was five million, nine ninety. And then two thousand twenty was five million, eight sixty four. So revenues have grown a little bit, but not very much. I think it's only a few, less than a hundred, a little bit over a hundred thousand, one hundred and thirteen thousand in three years. Again, the pie chart kind of shows you again, a visual representation of where most of the revenue comes from for the for the city. The biggest part, the blue part there in the pie chart is taxes. And then intergovernmental is your other, that's your state aids, shared revenue, whatever other grants that you guys would have. It there in the orange. Over that three year period, you know, your taxes, your property taxes have only increased roughly one point seven percent over those last three years. According to Wisconsin, you know, municipal levy limits, general fund, you're kind of limited how much you can increase the levies each year. So this compliance. The only way you can increase it more is by internal obligation debt. And increase the levy to to pay that back, which would go on the debt service fund. Page five. Again, three year comparison of the general fund expenditures over the last three years. Back in twenty twenty, it was roughly four point eight million. It's increased to five million, twenty seven in twenty twenty one. And then roughly five billion, two forty oh or eight twenty eight in twenty twenty two. So it has gone up, you know, spending inflation, those types of things. Total general fund expenditures increased, you know, roughly between those three years, four hundred, almost four hundred and forty one thousand or roughly nine point two percent. And inflation's been six, eight percent the last couple of years. Again, the pie chart just kind of showing you where your visual representation, where most of your spending goes. Public safety is the largest part there in the orange, roughly forty three percent. General government, the next one in the blue, at twenty four percent, and then public works at eighteen percent there in the gray. All right, moving on, page six. Summary of the water utility for the last five years. You got third number from the top there, net operating income or loss for the last three years, kind of focus on that. For twenty twenty two, again, had a net income of two hundred and twenty four thousand, six eighteen. If you kind of see where it has been in the last five years, it's kind of steadily dropped a little bit each year. Again, operating costs have gone up more than what the revenues have. Again, there was a slight increase with the simplified rate case on the water utility effective in January of twenty twenty three. The public service commission would approve. It was probably roughly like four, four and a half percent, I believe, is what they were authorizing back then. Again, the middle is just kind of showing you where your operating revenues versus your operating expenses have been kind of flat. Revenues are still above expenditures, but the gap has been narrowing narrowing a little bit by the end of that twenty twenty two. The bottom part just shows you kind of your unrestricted cash and the amount of cash on hand that isn't set aside for say bond repayments or something like that. Again, days of cash on hand at the end of twenty twenty two is like two hundred and six days. Still a pretty good reserve, but it has gone down. I think we moved some of the cash to reserve this last year. Page seven. Sewer utility. Again, similar to what was for the water, five year comparison. Sewer utility had a net income, net operating income. This is before like debt payments and those types of things, interest of four hundred and three thousand, oh forty two. That's why it's different from the total net income overall. Again, it's stayed pretty strong for the last five years. It has dipped a couple of years, but this last year was the lowest of the five years they have. Again, still pretty good net income though, or operating income. The operating expenses again, and the operating revenues again in the middle are exceeding the bar charts, but they are tending to narrow a little bit there. Again, if you go to the bottom of that page, unrestricted cash, roughly one point eight, almost one point nine million at year end for the sewer department. Fairly hefty amount of three hundred and thirty two days of operating cash. So that's almost a whole year. Again, this last year, I know that cash, that operating cash went down, but they did spend about six hundred and twenty eight thousand, excuse me, on fixed asset additions this last year. Page eight. Telecommunications. Again, a five year comparison, telecommunications has done well in the last five years. You can see where two thousand eighteen, it had a roughly a fifty seven hundred dollar net income. And for twenty twenty two, it ended up with a operating income of forty six thousand, two twenty one. So things have gone up. And you know, I think you provide more services, fees have gone up and some of the costs have changed. Uh, so things have gone up, um, and you know, I think you provide more services, fees have gone up, and some of the costs have changed and gone down over the last few years. Some of those new agreements, I think that they've been doing as well, lowered costs. Um, again, operating cash or unrestricted cash there at the bottom, uh, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand five nineteen. Again, doing pretty well, uh, three hundred and fifty-one days of operating cash at year end. Again. Uh, you know, talking about the thirty thousand, they, it would appear that they wouldn't have the funds sufficient uh to to fund that uh purchase that was talked about earlier. Um, page nine, uh, this is kind of, and this is right out of the audit reports. The summary of the long-term obligations, which you guys might be talking about a little bit here a little bit later. Uh, you have the governmental activities, which is the governmental funds loan, and then you have the business type, which is a water sewer and telecommu- telecommunications at the bottom. Again, just kind of pointing out in that top part, ending balance, uh, long-term liabilities of roughly seventeen point one million at the end of the year. Again, that did go up, but you did have new debt that you issued. Like eight point four, eight point five million dollars that you're in or during two thousand twenty-two. For the business type activities, uh, which is mostly all revenue debt, uh, and some compensated absences. Total outstanding debts for those, uh, it's four point seven million dollars at year end. So according to uh uh Wisconsin State statutes, you can only have general obligation debt issued up to five percent of the equalized value. So that uh general obligation debt li- debt limitation would roughly be twenty-six million, twenty-six point eight million dollars, if you look at the bottom line there. In a geo debt, general obligation debt at year end was sixteen million one forty-five. Uh, so you have roughly about forty percent of your debt capacity remaining as of the end of the year. Moving on to page ten. Uh, so summary of your TIF districts. Uh, you had several TIF districts that were closed this last year. Um, three, six, and nine. Again, that was kind of that reference earlier, that transfer into the debt service and why there was a net loss in those other governmental funds this last year. But this kind of gives you a summary of how the TIFs have performed. Eleven and twelve were new in two thousand twenty-two. Uh, so they have a little bit of a net in, a negative uh fund balance at year end. Again, TIF four is a donor um to eight and ten. So after it donated or being transferred to both of those funds, it still had a net income of forty-three thousand at the end of the year. TIF four has been operating uh well. Been talked about, TIF eleven and twelve that were just set up, there's no increment generated yet, but there has been some expense. TIF ten nets to zero because of the transfer from four. Um, page eleven, other matters. So again, I referenced earlier, there's a required audit communications, uh, if you guys want to look through and read. Um, I will talk about some of the points in that. Uh, during the audit, we did do a lot of audit adjustments. Um, uh, we've had this comment the last couple of years. Uh, it takes some time to learn the city financials, all the funds, and get everything recorded. So we have been working with city staff and trying to explain those, and we're working on trying to record those, so they're not audit adjustments going forward. Uncollateralized cash deposits, there's one bank that you guys have uh that you didn't have enough collateral from them. Roughly, I think, one point one million at year end. I think your policy states that you're supposed to get collateral for those or move the money from that bank. I think city uh finance and admin have been working on that, or maybe have already addressed that. Uh, Sabina's, subscription-based information technology arrangements, GAZB ninety-six. Uh, it's going to be a new statement that's taking effect for two thousand twenty-three. You look, working with your IT department, so any of those agreements, so you like you just were talking about like with Sprektrum, the three-year agreements. New uh accounting for that is to recognize and book that all at once on the financial statement. So it'll be like an asset or a liability deferred info, deferred outflow, and then you'll amortize that over the life rather than expensing those payments as you go along. It's a little bit of change in the accounting that'll be going forward for two thousand twenty-three.
Yeah, what, what's the justification there?
Uh, that's a good question. They want to see what you're locked into, I think, for any of those agreements and what your technology agreement, agreements are. So you know, you're kind of signing an agreement and you're only putting on the expense on the financials at a one point in time and not disclosing anything else with it. So they're changing that, saying, okay, you're kind of locked into these agreements for these three years. You're going to have these as expenses going forward. And it can go the other way too, like, so like when um we actually, I think eighty-seven picked up the lease for the farm, those types of things as well. That was GAZB eighty-seven, but this is for technology agreements. Utility billing adjustments, uh, during our audit, we do some uh testing of controls, of course. Um, one of the things was uh we looked at customer adjustments uh to make sure there's some backup documentation. Uh, going into the billing program uh for the utilities, water sewer bills, and seeing if, when the adjustments are made, that we can match those up with some backup documentation. Uh, when he did that, there was uh some documentation not readily available, so. And the process is or control is to make sure you have some backup for those adjustments and then probably also uh have somebody review and approve it as well. Uh, water utility net earnings requirement, um, again, kind of went through, you had a sewer or simplified rate case effective. Um, there are some bond covenants uh that has uh the water utility have at least one, we, basically a hundred and ten percent of what your annual debt payments are to have net income for that. Uh, you guys fell short this last year in our calculation by roughly about forty-two thousand dollars. Um, the last time you guys had a full rate case was in two thousand eight. Uh, so that was fifteen years ago, so it's been a long time. These simplified rate cases with the Public Service Commission are pretty easy, very cost-effective. And they ha- you don't have to go through a long draw out, drawn out process to submit an application. Um, the next time you can submit one of those simplified rate cases would be January of two thousand twenty-four. But it has to be filed at least forty-five days ahead of that time period. And right now they're looking at an eight percent increase in water rates. Uh, the PSC sets that. You, you don't have any say in that, and that's what they base it off of basically for inflation reasons. So I wouldn't recommend that you guys uh go ahead and do that, so you'd have to file it, you know, by mid-November, basically. Go ahead.
Just a question, Jay, I know we talked about that simplified rate case at eight percent. I think even a couple of months ago, it was at eight percent with um inflation dropping a little bit. Do you see that changing between now and January when we'd have to file?
They usually set that once a year, and then it, they, it'll come out probably this fall for what the rate will be next year.
Okay.
Uh, but depending on when you guys file, I'm guessing it would still be at this current rate, eight percent. If you wanted to wait longer, it would probably be at the new one if you filed in two thousand twenty-four.
Gotcha.
Thanks. But it's, you can only do it every twelve months, so that's the reason why you can't do it before January, have it new effective. Um, we'd like to thank everybody in the finance, uh Stephanie, Barb, uh Kate, and Aaron for all their help in getting through things and getting the audit done, uh, and also from the public works and sewer guys and water guys as well. Um, we've received a full cop, uh, and full and complete cooperation for everybody to get the audit done. Be it. Questions?
Yeah, anybody have any questions? I saw a few note takers here. Colin, go ahead.
I can't tell how much, uh, the amount of the funds from TID number four that went to ten and uh the other one.
Sure. There is an audit note. I just gotta find it here. That will show that, because TIF four ended up uh transferring out five hundred and sixty-seven thousand in total. And the amount that you wanted to know what went into six and eight.
Isn't, I think it's ten, isn't it?
Or into ten? Two hundred and eighty-seven thousand two thirty-seven, it looks like. And then four also, I think, went into, went into TIF eight as well for the other two hundred and seventy-two thousand roughly.
So it donates five hundred thou- uh, about six hundred thousand dollars?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, five hundred and sixty-seven thousand this last year. So the increment generated of TIF four exceeds its cost. And more, actually, a little bit more.
Plus that and forty-three thousand.
Correct.
Okay.
Anybody else have any other questions? Thank you, Jay. Appreciate you coming and explaining it to us and giving us the results. Appreciate that. And again, I, I, you know, this is kind of a learning curve for uh for Stephanie and and Aaron and Bob and the whole staff too, so we appreciate your guidance through that whole process.
Good, everybody's been great to work with. Makes it a lot easier as well.
Yeah, Dave, I echo that. Thank you and thanks for coming tonight.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so Justin is handing out information, but that's for the committee of the whole meeting. So let's, let's go ahead and finish out our, our regular agenda here. Um, communications and recommendations of the mayor, uh, of course, our next meeting. Aaron, remind us, uh, part of the, part of the budget pro- bu- part of the budget process, uh, what are we going to be talking about at that meeting?
Yeah, so our, uh, sorry, do you mean tonight or do you mean to, uh, next?
At the next meeting.
Next meeting, we'll be talking about personnel. That'll be our personnel workshop.
All right. Anybody else have anything for the good of the meeting before we adjourn this meeting? All right, uh, I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Olson, second by Ingeleker, that we adjourn until the next regular council meeting, which is set for Tuesday, September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, September All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Again, say no. Motion carried, we're adjourned at uh seven forty-three PM. And uh, I'm guessing we're okay with just going right into the uh committee of the whole meeting? All right, so committee of the whole meeting tonight, uh, it is uh seven forty-three PM, and I'll call that meeting to order, and we'll begin with Barb taking the role.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Colin Dijkstra?
Uh, here.
Lori Chestnut?
Here.
Paul Hagan?
Here.
Henry Velicker?
Here.
Dave Peterson?
Here.
Paul Mayo?
Here.
Dimitri Martin? Corey Nagel?
Here.
Eric Olson?
Here.
Nine present, not a quorum.
All right, uh, you have an agenda. It's really to talk about uh capital improvement, uh, programs that we have coming up for two thousand twenty-four. But we would need a motion to approve this uh, this agenda with that one handout that came from RW Baird.
Move to approve.
Second.
Uh, motion by Nagel, second by Martin, that we approve uh of the agenda for the committee of the whole meeting with that one uh additional handout. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Again, say no. Motion carried. Uh, so we're going to go right into uh the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four budget workshop uh for capital improvement plan, and Aaron, I'm guessing you're going to set this up for Justin.
Thank you, Mayor Smith, and council members on page two of your committee of the whole packet. Just wanted to start by doing a recap uh really quickly before we get to the projections from Justin and Baird. Um, recap of the two thousand twenty-three general obligation bond projects. And you can see him bullet pointed there on the memo. Uh, we had a nine-unit T-hanger building that we borrowed fifty thousand dollars for. That will not, it's been pushed back because of some BOA funding and the utilization of entitlement funding that has allowed us to complete both that and the master plan. Uh, that project cost will go up a bit. Uh, we're looking at about one point six million dollars to complete a nine-unit T-hanger. The good news is we only have to cover ten percent of that, and we look to cover the rest of that in the two thousand twenty um five borrow, actually. And it'd be completed in two thousand twenty-five. The other good news is there's a return on investment of about five years. I'm a little off on that, but we'll get into that in a little bit. Uh, the solar panel energy program that was completed within budget this year. Uh, the Swan Parks Playground and Splash Pad completed within budget in two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, Patrol Squad completed uh very, very close to budget. It was about a thousand dollars over, as you can see there. The replacing the street department pickup truck was completed within budget in twenty-three. Elm Street Reconstruction Design in progress and currently within budget by a long shot. Uh, annual computer replacement, I, I have in progress. I think it might actually be completed uh within budget. Uh, Towers in Connection to Public Works Facility, we talked about that tonight. And with the help of the buy-down from Wapaka Online's General Reserve Funds, that is also now uh in progress and within budget. Uh, the Public Works Facility is obviously the big one, um, is in progress and currently within budget. And then the Fulton Street and the Badger Street DOT project design, uh, not complete and not in progress. Uh, and that's because that is, uh, I, we've talked about the Fulton Street specifically a lot in our strategic plan process. That's a big, big project uh that we're looking to get some STP funding or other grant funding to help with, and we'll talk about that more as we, as we continue on. Uh, so our goals, we had, just to keep it simple, w- we had a very big borrow as the last couple of years to make sure that that Public Works Facility could happen in our window of, of being able to make it happen. And because of that, we have um a target of staying below one point five million dollars, so I would say for the next five years, and then we'll see where we're at to take care of our capital needs from a GO uh bonding standpoint. Obviously, we always want to remain within state and city borrowing policies, and we want, uh, really, we're gonna, and Justin's going to talk about this, we're going to ramp up and get a little more aggressive in paying down our debt service levy, especially since we've had that uh Public Works borrow. So those are kind of our goals that we're trying to hit on uh from a GO standpoint. Uh, so with that, um, I'm going to turn it over to Justin to go through some projections, and we're going to start in that GO. We're gonna, we're gonna focus GO Justin first, um, and then we'll get into the utilities after that, so. Nope, sorry.
Aaron, that, that number of one point five million, that's down from two, approximately two, is that the goal we used to have? Is that right?
Uh, you know, we would kind of look, I'm not sure, to be honest, Colin, that we had a set number every single year. We would look at it and we'd say, is this something we can handle? And we have been able to handle it in the past.
Okay.
So this is, I would say this is an, it's a target, and I, that we did not necessarily have a consistent one prior.
Okay, thanks.
All right, uh, any other questions before Justin starts? All right, with that, Justin, uh, we'll take it to your long-term capital improvement plan.
Yeah, thanks, Aaron. Uh, good to see everyone. So the presentation that I handed out matches everything that's in the packet. I just wanted to give you a hard copy so it's easier to see all the numbers and, and see you had a hard copy. So the first thing we'll talk about again is the general obligation debt. You've seen this financing illustration uh from me in the past, because ultimately, this, this long-term plan is a working, living, you know, long-term document. Uh, every time we look at the capital improvement projects, as Aaron said, we try to stay under a million and a half uh for two thousand twenty-four. It's looking like it will be, you know, approximately one million two hundred and seventy-five, so that's good news. Uh, that, that, you know, you're working really hard to try to keep that budget under a million and a half. That's, you know, great, because ultimately it's going to keep that debt service uh levy lower than potentially what I'm showing here uh tonight. So when I wa- I'm going to walk you through this page. Um, again, we, we, this is what you've seen, this is what I presented earlier this year, but the left side of the page, that's the existing debt service payments that are levy-supported, city-supported, so this does not include any water or sewer or TID-related tax increment district-type debt. This is just kind of levy-supported, city-supported debt service on an annual basis. This is just kind of levy supported, city supported debt service on an annual basis. So the actual levy that was set in twenty-twenty-three was one million one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. The actual debt service amount was closer to like one point nine million. But as you heard from Jay, you had a big influx of funds from the outstanding T I D districts that were closed to use some of that, uh, debt service fund balance to offset, to reduce the debt service levy down to that amount to ultimately manage your, your mid, your, uh, tax rate. So we've got the public works building that we borrowed for in twenty-twenty-two coming on board. We need to be able to pay, continue to pay down debt service, um, you know, at a reasonable pace, but, but also managing that, that tax rate. And that's what Aaron will get to, uh, in a, you know, in a future slide here. But ultimately, next year in twenty-twenty-four, the debt service, you know, is gonna be right around one million six hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. And then, you know, what we did was we, we built in one million five hundred thousand dollar borrowings pretty much forever. What is that debt service gonna look like? And that's in that hypothetical future C I P debt service column there. Now, again, like I said, if, if you borrow less than a million and a half, that debt service is gonna be lower. So the far right side of the page should be lower as well. Also, we're using interest rates that are hopefully conservative. You know, today, are they very conservative? They are a little bit. Hopefully, rates kind of stabilize in, in the future and kind of come back to a little bit more normal. But you're still, you know, we got what, three and a half percent for interest rate this year for, uh, capital borrowing, you know, I, that's kind of where we're still seeing, uh, a lot of, you know, it's gone up to about three point seven five percent for ten-year type financing, so. Um, and if you recall, on your public works building that we did in twenty-twenty-two, we, we did that a little faster than what we necessarily want to because we were kind of getting to that end of the lowest interest rates ever. And, and we, we knew rates were kind of inching up. So we pulled the trigger at that point and you were able to get, I believe, under three percent for the, for that twenty-year financing, not even ten-year, that was twenty-year. So that was, you know, very good news there. So again, the right side of the page is what projected it may look like in the future if you continue to borrow a million and a half every year going forward. It also includes the, the takeout, if you recall, of the construction note that we did for the second phase of the public works building, that additional, uh, three point two six five million dollars. So that's all built into that, that future borrowing as well. So I think if we go to page two, this is really, I think, good news to share because this is something that I know Stephanie, myself, Aaron, Justin, we've been keep- and, and Mayor, we've been kind of keeping our, our fingers crossed um, that we expected the value of the community to grow, and it has. Uh, over the last two years, we've seen significant growth in, in the community. Why that's important is because your borrowing capacity is based on the overall value of your community. As Jay said, you get to borrow up to, up to five percent of your equalized value, which is the fair market value of the community. The city has an internal policy not to exceed three point seven five percent of your available capacity. So basically limiting it to seventy-five percent. To always make sure that you have available capacity if something came up that you needed to be able to fund at a moment's notice. Whether that be, you know, you all of a sudden get a large developer that wants to come that needs some infrastructure, you may need to borrow for that. You know, or something breaks and you need to be able to fund. Those are the reasons why we want to make sure you always have capacity. It also helps with your bond credit rating. So in this picture, what you're seeing here, the black bars, that's your existing outstanding principal. As you can see, year over year, that's being paid down, which is good. I mean, that you're paying your principal down. You're not deferring any uh, debt over a long period of time. You're paying it down year over year. Why that's important is because then it allows you to take on that future one and a half million dollars and kind of keep it consistent with where you are year over year. And then that blue bar is the remaining portion of the public works, uh, building project, the three million dollars. So we've kind of layered in everything that we think will be coming in the future. But giving us enough breathing room, again, um, to be able to take on additional project if something came up that council, uh, wanted to get done. So you can see in twenty-twenty-five, if you grow one and a half percent going forward, you may have about five point five million dollars in still available borrowing capacity within your internal policy. So that, that's good news because it wasn't too long ago, we were presenting, I was presenting to you and it was looking like, you know, less than a million. So, you know, this is, the, everything is kind of coming to what we had hoped, which is awesome to see. So that's the general obligation. And Aaron, I know, you want to go through that?
I can take this one. Uh, thanks, Justin. So the next slide you will see, uh, titled two thousand twenty-three financial management plan. This is a projection and I want to kind of restate that. These are projections. Uh, things change, but we feel they're pretty accurate or should be pretty close. Uh, and this projects future tax levies in the general fund, the debt service fund and T I F districts. And then it also projects our future assessed value and then the mill rate at the bottom. One thing we look at each budget year is, okay, when we pass a budget, both our operations and our debt service levy, what's that gonna amount to from a mill rate standpoint? Our mill rate is kind of one of those benchmarks and measures that shows, um, how affordable it is to live in our community. And we have not had a revale, as we know, for a long, long time, and that impacts the mill rate. And, uh, we are going to have that, or we're having the revale now. I would expect actually a revaluation notices and change in value notices to go out at the end of September. And you can see what that does here to the assessed value. So if you look at this number here that I'm gonna highlight, it jumps forty-five percent approximately to our new, which is our equalized value of that, uh, six hundred and eight million. Uh, what that does is that helps the mill rate. And it also helps us, you know, we can, what our strategy is, is to uh, leverage up that aggressiveness, uh, from a debt service levy standpoint and pay down that debt at a little faster clip uh, and be less reliant on the, the fund balance in the general, or in the debt service fund, uh, to handle that. And then we want to mirror that, or goes up about seventy-five thousand dollars annually, uh, in, through two thousand twenty-eight in this projection. A couple of assumptions we made, uh, is you see this one point five percent over here. So you know that net new construction this last year was about, one point seven percent. I, we just figured a one point five percent increase year over year because if you don't do a revale, all you can capture is the new construction from your assessed value standpoint. If you do a revale, you can capture that equalized valuation growth. Uh, the other thing, so then we also paired that with our general fund levy because net new construction laws, or I should say levy limit laws tie your general fund supporting levy to net new construction numbers, those theoretically would be the same. And then we did say here, from a T I F district, uh, levy standpoint, if we do grow at one point five percent, you can make a general assumption that you're gonna grow a little faster in the T I F district. So I have that at five percent. That's just a throw in a dart. But it gives you an idea of where those numbers could go. So making all those assumptions and, and knowing that we want to execute this paying down the debt plan and then continuing with following levy limit laws, uh, you can kind of see the impacts that it has on mill rates. Uh, and right now we're at about nine eighty-three, uh, and the two thousand twenty-four projection, after capturing all that assessed value and getting that up to the equalized, uh, you can see it drops to below eight at about seven sixty-eight. Now, it, you can see it kind of creeps up with these assumptions over time. And that really is a byproduct of not being able to capture maybe what equalized value is doing in the growth of a community by not doing a revale. Another thing I just put in here, just so you guys can see, because a lot of communities do revales every five years to make sure that they're as close to a hundred percent as possible. I just threw a, a hypothetical revale in here in two thousand twenty-eight. And you can see what I put it at is fourteen percent growth from back, uh, from about now. And that, you know, just for perspective, I, I, I'm not sure if it would be fourteen or if that's a good number. We grew fourteen this last year. That's an anomaly. We grew thirteen the year before. That's a little bit of an anomaly. So we're saying over the course of that five years, um, maybe that's a number that could be used. And then you can see what happens to the mill rate. And if we're using the mill rate as a target all the time, you can see by not doing a revaluation, uh, that can creep up, creep up, creep up. And what we've done to manage that is we've bought it down by the debt service levy. Or I'm sorry, by the debt service fund balance. Uh, and then you can see this kind of, those revaluations give you a more accurate picture of what those mill rates really should be. So any questions or Justin, anything to add to that? Uh, Henry, go ahead.
I'm sure you guys have, uh, named a couple scenarios out. So you're basically suggesting, uh, our mill rate, there might be two dollars a mill rate that we could use towards reducing debt or be more aggressive with our debt. Is it, is it two dollars? Dollar fifty? That would, is that intake from this chart?
So, no, so there could be a scenario too where we would keep the debt service levy. I mean, there really couldn't be a scenario like this, but theoretically, if you kept the debt service levy exactly the same, that number, um, instead of seven sixty-eight there as a mill rate in two thousand twenty-four, it might be six dollars and something. What we're saying is it's important to ramp up our debt service payments.
I'm sorry, I missed the number there. I'm sorry. You, we could still accomplish more aggressive debt schedule and still get
Yes.
Seven seventy, no rate.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
So the assessed value, that's the housing, correct? Is that?
Um, so it's everything.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. So does, is that, are these numbers factoring in that River North subdivision? Because that's, that's a substantial housing project.
Uh, no, so you're saying if it, if we grow at a higher clip because of that?
Correct.
So it doesn't, it does not account for a boom like that? This is a conservative projection of that one point five uh, percent growth in that new construction. Which, so one point seven this last year, the year before was two point four four, which was a, the highest dating back over a decade. So, so no, I mean, is it possible that if there's, you know, fifty homes built, uh, and a bunch of value, uh, and, and multi-units and all of that, that it's at three percent? There's a potential. That's a hard number to hit for a lot of communities our size.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, so to just, I know you guys have other questions, but just to take into, uh, put it in perspective, when you talk about a one point five percent increase, if you were to look at like, uh, look at like, uh, going from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five with a one point five percent increase, that's, that's almost ten million dollars in increased assessed value. So, you know, even with River North, you're you know, you're not gonna get to ten million dollars just there. There's gonna have to be other, uh, projects that can get us to that, to that area. So by using one point five percent, at least we're, we're not being overly aggressive with, with our estimates. Mitch, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I'm just, um, I want to make sure I understand the
I was talking to the microphone.
I just want to make sure I understand the proposed budget is, um, is looking to increase the levy by about half a million dollars in twenty twenty-four. Is that what I'm getting from this?
Yeah, with, with the debt service levy.
So that we can pay off our debts faster.
Correct.
Good. Uh, Colin, go ahead.
And that was sort of my question as well, but do they have some? It seems like the mill rate after the, uh, reassessment, i- i- it's, it's not something you can almost compare year over year going backwards because of the jump. Is, is that right in my mind? Is, is that, because it, it seems like the seven point six eight, it sounds like we're dropping the taxes, but in fact, we're increasing it by, uh, well, five hundred, uh, one eighth.
Yeah. Yeah, you're right. So from, uh, not being able to compare it apples to apples going backwards, that's correct. So it depends on how, you know, everyone's value, you might go up twenty pers- it depends what the average
Understood.
of the raise is. So it's hard to say what the impacts will be. It'll be, it'll vary for each property, but that's an accurate statement.
Okay.
As, as a council, I think our decision is basically one of, do we reduce tax rate overall in the city? Or do we keep our tax rate as higher so we can pay down our debt more aggressively? Pay less interest on our debt. Is that fair? A point that we're gonna be discussing ultimately when we set our budget?
Yeah, I think that will be a conversation. Um, I do. I think that, in my opinion, and probably Justin's opinion, we, it would not be wise long-term to go much less than this from a debt service levy standpoint.
Yes.
Well, we lose our base, we revale and we get our base up again and, and, you know, we'd be backsliding again for, oh, but you can always add, uh, debt. Right?
Yeah, so you're in a unique situation in that you closed out these tax increment districts. You received a lot of money back into the debt service funds because at some point those tax increment districts receive advances from the general fund. It paid it back. So you got this, these funds to be able to use to, to buy down your debt service levy essentially. And that's what you, you've done. But that debt service is still there and you're, you don't want to deplete that fund balance all the way and be in a situation where you don't have any flexibility. It's gonna have to be that levy. So what Aaron's gonna show you on a future page here is a, a strategic way of using some of it while kind of balancing, um, the, the debt service over year over year.
Yeah, so good segue there. Um, so what you see here on this page, this is, uh, the debt service fund worksheet that we work off of and that Stephanie worked together with Justin on. These numbers that are highlighted here are the numbers that you saw from a debt service levy standpoint in that, uh, calculator, uh, projection sheet we just looked at. So you can see this, there are some other revenues in here that are being tied in to help actually still buy that down a little bit. And you'll see in two thousand twenty-six, we do have transfers in to the debt service front, fund from T I F eight. Uh, in that year in the amount of about two hundred and twenty-six thousand and then two hundred and fifty thousand. And those are helping us still keep that number lower than it could be if we levied the full amount. And just to be clear, T I F eight does owe this much going out to two thousand thirty-two, if you add all these up, to debt service, the debt service fund. So we're basically just recouping that cost from two thousand twenty-six to two thousand thirty-two. The other thing that's happening here is you are basically buying down that debt service levy during those years with the transfer from T I F eight without necessarily hitting your fund balance in debt service fund balance. So you're preserving a good, healthy chunk of debt service fund balance to then help us in the future when we no longer have this additional revenue from T I F eight and we no longer have any receivables out there. So then in two thousand thirty-three forward, you have this debt service fund balance that could also be tapped into to help keep that debt service levy lower. Now, just being frank, does council have the option to do both? And say, yeah, we're gonna use some fund balance and then we're gonna also use this transfer from T I F eight to keep it lower in two thousand twenty-five, six, seven, eight? Yes, that is an option. However, it likely presents larger challenges in two thousand thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, if that makes sense.
You're still trying to recoup all the costs that were advanced to T I F eight, right? We're still doing that in this plan.
Yeah, correct. Correct.
So in, in the out years, we could say forgive, I mean, I'm not suggesting this is, but a future council could say, okay, we recouped eighty percent of what was advanced. Because at one time we were not looking at, at recouping thirty percent at, at the early stages, I mean. So, um, yeah, okay, we're still on a trajectory of recouping all those costs.
Correct. There may be, just to be clear, so in our priority with that is to recoup costs in the water fund. Water utility first, debt service second, sewer utility third. And the sewer utility, it'll be close at the end if we recovered all of it.
You know, you're, you're, what, what you're seeing here is, is that, like every other community that we have in the state of Wisconsin and probably national, this is that we're playing the game here because the only place that we can really increase taxes is by borrowing more money. I mean, it seems, you wouldn't do that in your personal life, but that's what you're forced to do to, to stay under the levy limits that you have. I think we're doing a pretty good job of keeping that equalized. I mean, I hate to see us where we try to keep taxes lower by not doing any projects for five years and then all of a sudden in the sixth year, we got to do a, a ten million dollar project and we have to jump taxes up because of course, we can increase the, the debt, you know, the, the debt part of that. So, we're trying to keep that pretty level, but as you can see, it's gradually going up every year because we're continuing to do that borrow of about one point five million dollars.
And, and we will get to a point, if you stay on the average of one and a half million, where it starts to level out. It's just going to take time. And so, that's where the thought is to do it incrementally, not have large increases. This is kind of the one-time large increase because of the reassess and kind of keeping the tax rate still, you know, pretty, you know, much lower than it has been. But then starting to incrementally increase it up to that, that amount over the next several years. So, you won't feel as much of an impact.
Okay, I'm just going to scroll back up to this for a second in case, because we kind of jumped based on a question. Any other questions on either this slide or the debt service fund worksheet? Or for that matter, anything that Justin has gone through from a general obligation debt standpoint? All right, if not, of course, guys, we're not taking action tonight. So, welcome, any questions as you have a, a couple of weeks to process this? Contact us at any time. This won't be voted on until November, so. All right, with that, we're going to move to the sewer revenue financing plan. And we have a couple of options here. Option B and option C. Option A was not talked about at the utility board meeting tonight, or this afternoon, I should say. And I'm going to actually kick it to Justin Barron's just to give an overview of that conversation at the utility board meeting and what the difference in the options are here. Justin, you want to take over there?
Yeah, so, actually, we did talk about option A, but it pretty much was eliminated early on. Option B and C include a new project. We're looking at extending sewer out at the airport, so having a new sewer line along runway drive to service the properties along runway drive, so right next to highway ten there, including the airport and the hangars. This is being done as we have had quite a bit of development inquiries in that area. And they, there's a, a demand or a need for municipal sewer. So, option B was to take that project, put it in for construction next year without adjusting any of our other projects that were on our plan. I guess later this ye, earlier this year, excuse me. Option C was to put that project in for next year's construction and then push back a number of the other projects or feather out, I guess, the expenses and the debt. The sewer and utility board voted on going with option B. The main reason for that was the debt service coverage, which I don't, I can't remember the, the magic number we're trying to stay above. It gets fairly close, but we stay above it. And C is just a little bit more comfortable, but the discussion was to go with B and if needed, look at doing a rate increase in the future since we have not done a rate increase in the sewer since two thousand fourteen.
And I'll let, that's a, I know you talked about the debt service coverage ratio, which is on, would be on the far right of your screen, the second to last column on the far right. Justin Fisher, do you want to explain that and what the targets are for that?
Yeah, so, this is very similar to the general obligation. Left side of the page, that's your existing debt service payments in the sewer utility. So, this is sewer revenue bond debt, meaning that the utility has to make the debt service payments. You can't levy a tax for, for this related debt service. So, the middle of the page, that's the different options that Justin and Aaron and Stephanie have been working with me on is these different options of how to finance these, these projects over the next several years. And so, the first one would be in two thousand twenty-four. And then what we have done in the past is for the utilities to do a borrowing every other year. So, in two thousand twenty-five would be the next borrowing to do the two thousand twenty-five and two thousand twenty-six related capital improvement projects. And then in two thousand twenty-seven, we would do the two thousand twenty-seven and twenty-eight capital projects. So, we kind of layered in everything that was in Justin's spreadsheet. And then ultimately, on the far right side of the page, you can see that combined sewer debt service on an annual basis and what that looks like. Now, when we look at it from a, a bond perspective and, and the resolutions and the bond covenants, we're looking at the operating revenues minus the operating expenses. That doesn't include depreciation and that type of stuff in there. So, based on the two thousand twenty-two draft audit that we saw, the net revenues were about one point one six million dollars. So, if we take that number divided by, say, the, the two thousand twenty-three amount of six hundred sixty-three thousand, that gets us to a coverage ratio of one point seven six times. So, that's how it kind of works. The magic number that Justin was kind of referring to was we try, we want to at least see a one point two five times coverage. That gives enough comfort that if something happens that, you know, an unexpected expense occurs in the utility from an operational standpoint, that you still have enough revenues hopefully to be able to pay that debt service that's due that, that particular year. And as you can see, when you look on the far right side of the page, the column that Aaron was mentioning, the, the low kind of point there is about that one point three seven times coverage. So, that gives us, at least we know for the next several years, we should be in, in good shape. And so, as Aaron said, you know, this is something we look at every year. And if something happens where all of a sudden that coverage ratio shrinks because operation expenses have, have gone up more than what we anticipated, more than the revenue going up, and there's that imbalance, that, that amount may, you know, go down. If the revenues look, you know, come in better next year and the operations stay the same, this coverage ratio will look better. So, that's something that we'll just need to look at year over year. But when we modeled in everything, it, it's really showing that, you know, especially through two thousand twenty-seven, you should be at at least one point five plus times coverage, which is, which is good, good to see from that perspective.
So, Justin, that coverage, does that give us the better ability to, to get better interest rates and better borrow? The higher that, that percentage is?
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely something that the bondholders are, you know, the investors are looking at. The better coverage you have, you know, the more secure you, you're going to look from their perspective.
Okay, and then Justin Barron's, I, even though the utility board recommended B instead of C, I mean, this obviously has to come to city council for approval and that will be at the next meeting, I'm guessing?
Well, correct, it's a recommendation. I'm not sure when it's going to be officially adopted by council, but council has ultimate say.
Okay, so, do we need to explain why there's a, my, my question really goes to this. Do we need to explain what the difference is between B and C? For their consideration? Or, or do you think we do that at a future?
I can provide additional information if you want at any meeting or.
Okay. I think mayor two will all be going through and Justin will go through specific projects ti, right after this. And you might be able to just answer that question when you go through those.
Sure.
Okay.
Colin, I, I know you turned down the lights, but you remember, we got a bunch of old guys in here that can't see very well.
I thought that was helping them. Are you on backup?
Maybe a little bit.
We also have next the water revenue and, and we talked about this in the audit presentation. You heard Jay talk about it and getting really close to that coverage, that debt service coverage ratio and, and even being below the one point one. You can see here, we have a year where we're at that one point one. Justin, do you want to speak to this and, and any recommendations you may have moving forward of this plan?
Yeah, so, if you recall, we did the construction note earlier this spring that funded the, the public works project plus some of the cat water-related water system projects. And that's really because when you look at the coverage, as, as Jay said, and if you look to the far right side of the page, that coverage ratio is right at one point one times coverage. And per the bond covenants, you need to be at least at one point one times coverage. And again, I said, I like to see my clients at one point two five times plus coverage if possible. But this, the reason for that is because if we were to do that financing earlier this year, you would have had less than one point one times coverage. So, the next borrowing we're anticipating would be in two thousand twenty-five, which would refinance that, the borrowing that we did earlier this year, that construction note for four hundred and eighty thousand related to the, the twenty-three and twenty-four capital improvement projects, plus the twenty-five and twenty-two, twenty-six capital projects. Because if you look to the far left side of the page, you can see your debt service, it's at four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars in two thousand twenty-three and it goes to four hundred and sixty-one thousand, but then it drops down to two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. And we're trying to capitalize on that drop in debt service to, to then factor in these, these borrowings that may take place in the future. So, that's kind of the, the main thing is that drop in debt service. So, that's how we modeled in these future borrowings for two thousand twenty-five and two thousand twenty-seven. Because then when you look to the far right side of the page, starting in two thousand twenty-five, you can see that the coverage is about one point six three times co, times coverage. So, that, that's good, you know, but you still, in two thousand twenty-eight, it gets back down to that one point one four times coverage. So, that's where, you know, we're going to continue to look at it and that's where Jay is kind of saying, do we want to look at some kind of simplified rate increase or, or something of that nature depending on what these capital projects end up being? I mean, if it's what it is today, you, you will meet coverage. But this is, you know, a projection that we have today. You know, are the project costs going to come in higher? Are they going to come in lower? That, but that's kind of what we're, we're seeing today.
Well, and to Justin's point, I was just asking Aaron this too, because we had this discussion. The plan is to, to do another simplified plan, update for the water system. And I think that's why we're holding off on sewer increases because we know that, that, that water is probably going to be about eight percent next year.
Yep.
And so, we don't want to see an eight percent increase in water and then also equalized rate increase in the sewer. But those numbers are not in the projections that Justin Fisher is showing you right now.
Correct, yeah, we just used the prior years audited, you know, in this case, it was the draft audit numbers. Kind of use those going forward, so. If the revenues improve, this coverage ratio should look better, all things staying consistent.
I'm, I'm going to build off of what the mayor just said as well. So, yes, those coverage ratios would improve a li, uh, some off of a simplified rate case. We've also talked about also a, a full rate case after the public works facility is built as well. Because a lot, because the water utility is going to be renting from the, from the general fund and so on and so forth and just how, how to capture that, that's also going to be a conversation for the future. Just so, just so council knows that that's been discussed as well. Okay, any questions on the water revenue financing plan? Okay, awesome. Justin, thank you very much. Before we let Justin take a seat, and I don't think we're going to let you go yet, because we might, we might come back to your stuff. We, if, if anyone has any more questions for Justin Fisher now would be great. Otherwise, we're going to transition to department heads. We're going to go through each project that we're looking at and proposing as a part of those numbers we just talked about, only in two thousand twenty-four. So, we'll do that. Each department head will get a crack at it. In your packet, you'll see, starting on page thirteen, it's kind of just an overview of the capital plan, some definitions. This is something you should see every year. And then you also see proj, projects by department, organized by department. The way we typically look at it internally is we look at projects by funding source, which is kind of how we've just been talking about things. So, I'm going to use the projects by funding source, starting on page twenty-four, to go through these projects. And we're just going to bounce it around to different department heads while we do that. And department heads, we're also, we're not only going to talk about what's being borrowed for in two thousand twenty-four or what's being proposed. It'd be great too, I'm going to, like, for example, this first one, Laura, the cemetery tractor and the perpetual care fund. I think it's important to note that capital-type projects are getting done with other monies other than borrowing. So, with that, do you want to go ahead and kick it off with that cemetery tractor?
Sure, so, as Aaron said, we are not going to use the, the capital improvement funds to fund the tractor for the cemetery. Instead, we are going to use the cemetery perpetual care fund for this project. We are in dire need for the cemetery tractor. The, the, we can barely lift two-thirds of a load with the current tractor we have and it's leaking a lot of fluids. So, either it'll become a maintenance headache for the next year or we can replace it as quickly as possible. And that's, and that's what we're looking at. In fact, Casey and Josh have been working with other companies to research the tractors that they want to get. And then, that's all I need to talk about for that.
Okay, any, any questions on the cemetery tractor? Just to give a little overview of the cemetery perpetual care fund and, and sorry, talking about a couple of things at once. So, Laura, if I, if I'm repeating something you just said, I apologize. But those monies, those are revenues that come into a fund that is meant specifically to help maintenance at the cemetery. And those are usually from lot fees over the course of years and years and years. And for reference, that's about how much we have in that perpetual care fund. It's a little over fifty thousand dollars. All right, moving along, GO bonds. So, now we're getting to the GO bonds that we talk about kind of primarily when we talk about our capital projects. So, you'll see in there, we have ten thousand dollars for this coming year, the UW University Planning Project. And this is a partnership that many municipalities have with UW Madison. And they utilize the University of Madison to execute planning projects associated with a number of different things. Typically, for that, you can see that there's actually thirty thousand dollars over three years, ten thousand dollars a year. You may get six to eight professional plans done. For perspective, one plan may cost you seventy thousand dollars if it were to go through a professional consultant. So, this way, you get six to eight plans for thirty thousand over three years. We have seen, there's a bunch of plans posted on their university website. We have seen a number of them and they look very, very professional. To give you an example of some of the projects that the development review team has identified, taking a look at, uh, planning for vacated facilities when we move out, out and go into the public works facility. So, Water Street, Churchill Street, the HFH, old HFH building and a number of other areas. Actually, the entire rec center block there, we've got that school-owned building as well in addition to the HFH. Fulton Street, you know, Fulton Street's a big, big capital project that's sitting out there. And can we leverage this planning to position ourselves to be much more competitive from a grant that may bring in three-plus million dollars? Uh, I think there's a Riverwalk potential, PED Bridge. Come on, Justin, what else? Got to help my memory.
Churchill Street, Fulton Street.
Churchill Street, thank you. So, those are just some examples of what plans could be looked at as a part of that university planning project. Any questions on that? Next, we have a Crestview Platte acquisition. So, right now, the city may. So right now, uh, the city may, and I say may, have the potential to acquire, uh, forty-nine residential lots uh, that could potentially be used in a way that is not for residential housing long term. Uh, there's still a lot of details to hammer out here. This is, I just wanted to put this in a placeholder, as a placeholder. So hopefully, when those details come to fruition between now and November, uh, we can discuss that at more length. But I wanted to put something in here from a planning purposes standpoint. This basically would allow the city to acquire, uh, forty-nine lots, um, and preserve those lots to be used for housing and not for, um, a use that, um, is other than that, I guess is the way to put it. So, um, any questions on that? Again, hard to s-
Where's Crestview?
North of, um, the railroad tracks of Elm.
How'd you come up with the number, Erin?
Um-
They're already plotted.
Yeah, they're plotted. Yep. Um, I came up with the number just based off some very, very preliminary conversations I had with the, the individuals that own the property now. But that is not like an agreed upon number or anything, so.
Is it the entire? I, I, I think that that property is, has been listed for sale.
Mm-hmm.
Is that the entire property?
It's not.
Okay.
It would be just the platted section, uh, not the remaining. There's several, several acres. It's actually a small portion of what was listed recently.
Okay, great.
Uh, any other questions on that? Uh, next, wayfinding implementation. Jared, I'll kick it to you for this one.
Thank you, Erin. Um, so similar to what we're working on this year, uh, we would like to continue our wayfinding, um, and branding initiative. So this year, we are focusing on, uh, more of the, uh, vehicle directional signs, uh, the signs that maybe categorize the different districts. The signs that point you towards different city elements or, um, amenities just outside the city. Trying to, I guess, uh, replace some of the current wayfinding signage that's out there. So I, two good examples, if you're coming down Fulton and you're coming towards Main, uh, there's actually a wayfinding sign just before, uh, I think that's Washington Street. And then just before Main Street, pointing you towards different city amenities. I know a lot of people have GPS nowadays, but, uh, it's still one of those cohesive elements of a city that, um, I guess, elements of a city that brings some cohesion. So as you're maybe driving, you know, with the GPS, or you don't have the GPS on, and you see that directional, um, you know, signage pointing you towards the amenity you're looking for. Or you're just driving down Main Street to take a look at our beautiful downtown, um, and you see some amenities that are pointed out that, that now visitor would like to go visit. And spend more time, um, hopefully money in the city. Um, so a lot of different benefits to that one, but hoping to continue that. So we're only doing about, I, I want to say eighty-five percent of the signage, um, eighty percent. There would be some more trail signage that we'd want to, um, look into doing. Um, and then also, um, maybe some bigger projects like, uh, entryway signs into the city. Just to kind of highlight those traffic, traveling on Highway ten, um, to try to draw them in more. So, uh, projects like that would all be part of this wayfinding implementation. And we'd just be kind of expanding on the project we're currently working on for this year. And then update for that project, we hope to have, um, all sign designs, language, everything finalized this year, and then sent to the sign, um, manufacturer yet this year. And then they'll put it in their queue for over winter.
Any questions for Jared on the wayfinding implementation? Okay. Uh, next, I'll take the next one, uh, and then I'll kick it back to you, Jared. Uh, River North area infrastructure design. See, see a hundred thousand dollars in there. Uh, this is a very conservative number. And again, details to be figured out on how that would look. We, happy to say, we do have some interested, um, parties, uh, that are interested in a large area in River North. And, and we're currently having conversations, um, could be structured a number of different ways between now and November. That number may not be that, uh, but we wanted to be conservative and put it in for planning purposes, uh, right now. Also important to note that things that we have in here from a River North standpoint, um, those will also be reimbursable through TIF increment in the future. So much like you just saw TIF eight transferring back because it owed the debt service fund, that would also be a plan likely for, um, anything with River North here. Any questions on that? All right, Jared, back to you, professional planning services.
Yeah. So the addition of, uh, this one, which would be twelve thousand dollars for 2024, uh, is just a proactive, uh, planning approach, um, that I was, or that staff discussed, and, uh, I was in favor of, of, uh, I guess it would, it would be for projects not yet planned, um, but for opportunities that come up, such as this Crestview App- uh, Platte acquisition, um, or any other parcel in the city that we would like to try to market, um, or show the development potential to try to get a big development into the city on a parcel. So it's, there's not a specific project at the moment, uh, but again, trying to take that proactive approach and maybe taking a look at a parcel next year that the city owns, or would like to see better developed, um, engage in planning services and design services to try to show what it could be. Cause I'm, I'm sure everybody else is similar to myself in which, when you see the vision, you know, it really, really starts to heighten your creativity and show what you, what it could be. Whereas if you just have a vacant and rundown lot, uh, it's sometimes hard to formulate a vision of what it could be. So just, uh, a planning services, um, fund that could help us with, uh, with a project next year and, uh, marketing different parcels throughout the city.
Okay. Questions for Jared on that item? Do want to also say, before we move on, uh, we'll also be, uh, setting out a, a pack. We didn't want to overwhelm people with pages and packets and all that. You will all be getting a packet that does include a page for each of these that shows the justification and impact of the operational budget and all that, so. The next item is seal coat roads, Justin.
Yeah, this, like to do some seal coating on our roads and get on an every other year schedule. Um, this is a very cost effective maintenance treatment that would extend the life of roadways. We did something very similar to this, probably close to five years ago, we did all of Rainard, all of Timber, and a majority of Bailey to give you a idea of how much roadway you'd get out of that, so. That sort of treatment extends the life of roads at least five, 10 years.
Okay. You might hear a little more about that at the end when Justin talks about Pacer ratings and how that can work into that. All right. Um, next, Hill Street and Eastgate subdivision. Actually, I'm just, just keep taking the next couple here.
All right. Yeah. So we're going to, next year, we're planning a repave of several different streets. Uh, we were initially looking at Eastgate, but we're probably going to shift to different, uh, roadways, which we'll get into. But we're looking at basically milling overlays. Um, we have several roads we're looking at doing. We did push Elm Street back a year. Um, and again, I don't know, I haven't said it at this group, but at the Sewer and Water Utility Board, better aligns with the three different borrows, um, feathering out that debt, and then also gives us more time to plan and, um, secure additional funding for lead service lines. So that's, those two projects swapped, um, so moved up the repaves. Just below that is the alley repave. So right over here on Badger Union, uh, that alleyway is in terrible shape. So we're looking at getting that replaced as well.
Okay. Annual computer replacement. Um, this is something, um, I'll help Josh since he's not in here. Josh, feel free to come out if you'd like. Um, this is something that's built in every year, eleven thousand dollars. It's just something that we, um, have put into our capital budget. Mayor Smith mentioned it before. Uh, this is something that you could argue could be in our general fund budget. But the way that the system works, it incentivizes some of these items that are larger ticket items to be moved to the capital budget. Uh, so this is something we've been doing for a while, and since Josh is out here, I'll turn it over to him.
You covered most of it. Generally, we're able to get thirteen to fifteen computers replaced each year. I think my area are coming out of this as fiscally responsible for about a hundred and twenty computers, so that math never adds up. We've got some that are in a primary role that we try to get the user a new one every five years. And then those get rotated to a secondary role for another two to four years after that, before they're rotated out altogether. So we get two lives out of our computers, seven to eight years. Next year, Public Works Department is getting replaced, and that's fourteen computers.
All right. Josh, why don't you keep rolling with the meeting agenda management software?
So for quite a number of years, we've talked about getting software to help make the meeting process more efficient. That's probably more of a joint effort between IT and the Clerks Department and some of the other departments that do their meeting stuff. And I don't know all the details that go into the backend, but there's a lot with getting minutes put together and all the paperwork here. And this process is meant to streamline it, um, to make things more efficient. And we'll see if next year's the year that we dive more into it. I know a handful of years ago, we looked into it and got some cost estimates and just didn't have the funding for it. So we'll give it another go. And, um, you know, it makes the process for the department heads to get things on the agenda or into the packets quicker. It makes the process to get the minutes done, because instead of writing stuff down on paper, it's going to be entered on a computer and those sort of things.
This is, I got asked by a city council member, uh, a number of months ago, um, about, you know, what are things technology wise that can make things more efficient? That can maybe help us with cost savings, uh, in our general fund. And this has a potential to be one of those technology items, so. Um, I think you're still up, Josh. Microsoft Office upgrade.
Okay. So Microsoft Office is probably one of the most expensive pieces of general software used on computers in a business. We are between, I got a handful of computers still on Office 2013, and then a majority in 2016. Uh, support for Microsoft Office 2016 ends in 2025, which means no more updates, security patches, all that sort of stuff. Um, I'm not a big believer on being on the latest and greatest version of Office because of the high cost of doing it. But I want to make sure we're on a version of Office that is supportive, that we can get patches for and, uh, protect security of our systems. Um, the other thing is email security increases. Once you're on an unsupported version of Microsoft Office, they don't update Outlook to connect. So at some point, we'd risk, uh, having issues connecting to our Microsoft three sixty-five. So it's the right time to get onto the latest version. Right now, twenty twenty-one's the latest version. I'm hoping with the timing, that maybe Microsoft pushes out one newer version so we can truly be on the brand new one and get our monies worth out of that. But that's about four hundred and fifteen dollars per computer, and I've got seventy computers running Microsoft Office.
Any questions for Josh?
This is a one-time fee. Uh, it was my understanding that Office is mostly a subscription fee now.
So there's two ways to do it. You can still get a perpetual license, or you can do the subscription based one. I've looked into both. Um, we pay about eighty-five hundred a year for our Microsoft three sixty-five email, and that's for about ninety user accounts. To upgrade that to the next level to include the Microsoft Office programs, the full suite, um, would add about fifteen thousand, I think it was fourteen thousand dollars a year on top of that. So after two years of the cloud-based one, we'd pay for a perpetual license that we can use long term. And I don't see getting an extra fourteen grand a year in my operations budget to do that. So this seems like the more fiscally responsible way we can do it.
Yeah, I'm glad you found it.
Unless you want to give me more money each year.
No, no, I'm saying that's a, that's a good thing you found. I didn't know it was still available.
It's mostly just for the volume license customers, the businesses that can still get that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Josh? Thanks, Josh.
Thanks.
Next, back to Laura. Replace Lakeman Field light poles and field rental.
Yeah. So, uh, we have already started the fundraising process, um, as you all know. And so far to date, we have a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars that we've fundraised. And with the capital improvement, we are now upwards of two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. We really want to bring in, um, a total of three hundred thousand dollars fundraised, knowing that, um, the total cost of the project that we're looking for at four seventy-five is the very high end. Um, we've got a lot of local people who can help us with this project and could potentially, um, give some in-kind to that. It is important to note that we have four grants in process, as well as trying to, to get the three hundred thousand dollars raised. The grants are through brewers, packers, timber etlers, and, uh, Major League Baseball grant. And the Major League Baseball grant, um, sounds like it could cover almost the entire cost of the renovation. They just paid for the turf fields at River Falls. So it's something that is in reach, um, and with our great grant writer, is something that, um, could, could potentially happen. We also have two potential major donors still coming in. Um, so if we don't raise the money that we need for this grant, um, we've got two contingency plans through our own budget. And the first one is to use our equipment replacement fund that we have, um, I believe it's like sixty thousand dollars in. And then our Eco Park Playground money that's set aside in the capital campaign for 2025, we can shift that to help offset the cost for this Lakeman project. So even if we don't truly fundraise what we're looking for, or get in-kind donations that we're looking for, we have contingent, contingency plans to make sure this project still occurs, because as you all know, it's a safety issue. And we really want to lock in the bid sooner rather than later for a number of reasons. One of them is to get better pricing. Another one is a lot of the companies are filling up their calendars for the 2024 year. And if we want to get them, if we want to get our project on their calendar in a, in the fall of 2024, we need to get them, um, on the docket now. And, um, again, we feel really good that we're going to be able to hit our goal. The last part about this is, we don't want to delay this project, because as you know, it's a safety issue. But also, we have spent a lot of money on fixing capacitors this year alone. Um, and so it could just become a money suck if we continue to fix the lights that currently exist for another year or two. So that's, that's the Lakeman Field project.
Especially for our five-time grand champion.
Yeah.
Any questions for Laura regarding that project? Okay. Thanks, Laura. You're still up, because we have Riverside Park Shelter Roofing next.
Yep. So, um, I've been busy creating a master plan for all of our, um, improvements that we need to do at the parks. We have nine playgrounds, nine shelter roofs, five trucks, um, nine shelters that we potentially would need to rehab besides the roofs. So it's really important that we stay on track with our renovations that we have when we have them. Because if we push any back, that's going to make all of those other projects potentially get pushed back as well. And we don't run it, want to run into a situation where, um, the roofs start to decay or the playgrounds become unsafe. And so, um, the next thing on our, um, capital improvement is for the shelter roofing, because that's just one of the things that needs to happen sooner rather than later. And then we have other roofings that are on the agenda in the next years to come. And then, do you want me just to keep going?
Yeah.
Okay. Same thing with the truck replacement. Um, it's getting to the point now where we're putting more money into it. And so the sooner we can replace this truck, and that can get put down the line, and we can get rid of other parks crew trucks. Because again, like I said, we've got these, these other, these five other vehicles that are in our, in our, um, database that we need to also make sure that we maintain and, and continue to trade. Brainard's Bridge Island Restoration. This is an exciting, um, project that's coming up. The DNR actually approached us because they want to help renovate those islands that are quickly eroding, um, feet by feet every year. And they have already set aside sixteen thousand dollars in their own budget to help offset the cost for this, um, island restoration. In addition to restoring the islands, they're going to increase the trout habitat on the river. And so, um, it's something that we want to help them with. And again, we're optimistic that it won't come to a full fourteen thousand dollars, but that's what we're going to need right now in order to meet the total of thirty thousand dollars that they need for this project.
Thank you Laura. Any questions for Laura? All right, thank you everyone for, I know it's been a long night so far, but thank you for bearing with us. Chief?
Yes, body cameras. Um, we've had our body cameras for the last five years. And during that timeframe, um, we've been with Axe and every two and a half years, they've been upgrading our, our body cameras. Um, so that's up this year. So, and speaking with them, with the, how the rates have increased, um, if we go into another five-year contract with, with them, those, uh, the cameras with inflation and everything and software costs have gone up eight thousand dollars. So we talked with them in regards to going out ten years as to what that would do for pricing with us. Um, so we would still get the same cameras every two and a half years for upgrades. And what they will do is they will lock us into the five-year pricing for the next ten years. So basically, we're going to get the second five years for the same pricing as the first five years. With inflation and how everything with technology and software is going up, um, we feel this is the proper direction to go. And the body cameras are just, they're, they're really important for, um, what we've been doing when we go out on scenes, um, being able to review them, um, lawsuits, whatever it may be. We've been able to go back and look at citizen complaints and find out that, um, that the officers have done the right things. So it's a really important project that we have.
All right, Chief, how about, uh, I think for the GO standpoint, the patrol squad's the last one?
Yep, um, back in two, two thousand twenty, we talked about, or maybe it was before that, about replacing the squads. Um, we've been going on the even number of years, two vehicles, odd number of year, one vehicle. And by doing that, we've been able to reduce our costs and maintenance. We used to be over twenty-five thousand dollars in maintenance. And I looked at our maintenance over the last few years as to, um, what we've actually spent this year. It's about six thousand, last year's about ninety-four hundred, two thousand twenty-one was ten thousand five hundred and two thousand twenty was thirteen thousand. Um, what, we're having problems with, we're holding on to the squad so long that the maintenance was just eating everything up. One of the things that we had to deal with was, uh, the water pumps on the cars that we had. And you have to drop the whole engine just to get the water pumps. I think the last we paid for a year and a half ago was thirty-five hundred dollars to replace the water pump. So we've been on a rotation of getting rid of the cars. Um, one of the things that we still don't have a total price for because the, the bids have not come out is, um, for the squad vehicles, the, the Fords have gone up twenty percent in the last year. We're assuming that Chevrolet or GM is going to be at the same, those prices are going to come out, um, hopefully mid-September here. And then, um, they're going to be taking orders shortly thereafter. Um, last year, they had a one-day window for squads to be ordered. Um, the people that didn't order them didn't get them. And the other ones who, um, didn't use the, the government bids or the, the companies that work the government, never got their vehicles. Um, so that's, you know, we've always gone through E-WALD with that because they have the government bids and work with them. And the connections we've always gotten our vehicles. Um, the last thing I'll say about that is what we've been able to do with the vehicles is when we sell them in the last couple, we were able to, um, after we placed the water pumps, sell to the city at a very reasonable price. The sales of the squads that we've, um, recouped over the last four to five years, um, I think it's around the fifty, sixty thousand dollar range that we have. We'd be using fifty thousand dollars from the sale of the squads that we've had in the past, putting towards, um, that budget or towards the total cost and we'd be only looking at borrowing, um, around a hundred and four thousand dollars. Um, some of the stuff we're just guessing at as to what prices are going to be because they, they just keep changing so much. Um, I think any of the, anything if we were to go over, I think we could go back into for the sales of the cars that we have with the sale of them, that we could use that money to cover any costs that would go over.
Yeah, thank you Chief. So in summary, in that scenario, that would be buying down the, the purchase of those two vehicles by about a third. And just, I don't want to assume everyone knows what these reserve funds are. The reserve funds are balances that have been built up in each department from a couple of things, from the sales of other equipment. Uh, and then also, um, P-card or purchase card or credit card rebates tied to that department. So over time, those balances have built up and you're seeing in this budget, um, buying down our borrow in a number of ways. So that's it for GO. Any questions for Chief? All right, so you'll see here Parks Equipment Reserve Fund, there is something there. Uh, Laura, do you want to talk about that digital signage?
Right, so we've got our marquee sign out front, um, that is, um, out front of the rec center. That is increasingly difficult to get into because of locks that are sticky and even just pulling the thing out, it, you have to wiggle it. It's just, it's very time intensive. The letters are falling apart, the box that holds the letters is falling apart. So anyways, um, we would really like to get digital signage to make it easier, to be able to announce more things at one time, um, change it very easily from the confines of our own desks. Um, so I would like to look into getting that sooner rather than later because we're going to get to a point where we literally will not be able to use the marquee sign anymore very soon.
All right, thanks Laura. We already talked about the patrol squad. Chief just explained the use of that fifty thousand dollars. Laura has touched on the private donations when she talked about, um, the lights project. Anything else you need to share with that or do you think you covered it? Okay. Um, I'm going to jump here and then we're going to go back to utilities. Uh, Justin actually has a, replacing a pickup and that's actually not a pickup. I believe it's a, it's a dump truck.
Dump truck, ten-year dump truck.
Ten-year dump truck. Go ahead, Justin.
That's going to come out of our, uh, replacement fund, so we're not borrowing for it. But we have, uh, we've talked about that before, once we build up our replacement fund to start utilizing it and use less borrow. So that's the plan.
Okay. Awesome. And that's it for general fund-related equipment as far as how we're utilizing the reserve funds to help offset our borrow costs. Now, Justin, if you want to kind of explain water and wastewater projects, uh, there's not as many of them. But this might be an opportunity to talk about option B and option C, what the difference is. And I know we have a gentleman that's been, uh, in attendance for one of our longest meetings to memory. Uh, so maybe he can explain how he's interested in this as well.
Right, so, so starting in the water, uh, we have the River North stuff that's in there, uh, that's a little bit different of an animal that's been talked about already. Um, you can see the reflection of Elm Street being pushed back a year. Fulton Street is in the pre-pre planning stages, so that's on there as well, uh, out in the near future. Um, we're looking at replacing the remainder of our pickup trucks in the water utility. So that's reflected in the next three years. And then we have a backup generator at Mount Tom. This generator, uh, services our booster stations. So that Mount Tom is, um, has a tower and a standpipe and a booster station. And, and as our water infrastructure is set up, there's a high zone and low zones. Basically, the city is split up into two zones, um, service from different towers and different wells. This is the one point where we can take water from the low zone and put it to the high zone, uh, because we have more wells in capacity on the low zone. So what we don't have there is backup power, so we'd like to include that there. So this number, the backup generator plus a, uh, small masonry building, uh, to house that along with some, a number of electrical improvements, so. Um, a valve exerciser and repair tools. So this, we have to exercise all of our valves in the city, um, once every five years. We do it by hand, which is, uh, labor-intensive, so there's tools out there that, that help you do it. Uh, so it reduces on the strain on the operators and so it's a, a safety aspect. Uh, but it also does it such where it will break less of them. It's just the nature of the beast, these things sit there in the ground, they corrode, they rust. When we come to turn them, they often break, so, uh, that's what we're looking to do there. Wastewater side, again, you see the River North stuff, um, and what's showing on here, I believe this is option C. Still seeing Fulton Elm on the docket. Uh, one major project we saw, uh, is the Bowlby Lift Station. That is our lift station that feeds or services everything west of Western Avenue, uh, so a major portion of the city. It is undersized, we have lots of issues and, uh, we're going to start the planning of that next year. The airport sewer extension, so I've mentioned this already. We would install a new gravity main, uh, a long runway drive there, uh, east of Joanne or Ferg Lane, excuse me, uh, all the way through to the hangar, uh, or the airport terminals. And, uh, we'd have to have a lift station installed there as well. Uh, so that would serve all those properties that are a long runway drive. We would design it and build it to allow future expansion to the north. So everything east of, uh, the cap services subdivision is not served by sewer. So it would open that up, uh, to there. Uh, most recently, we had a development, uh, come forward to us saying they would help pay for their initial share of this to get this project underway, meaning when we do this project, we have to assess, uh, the adjacent properties that are benefiting from this improvement. Uh, they would cover their share. Uh, we're looking at somewhere in the ballpark of thirteen thousand dollars per acre. Sorry, I'm in their hand over there.
Sorry, uh, my map fell.
Um, as, as mentioned already, the Sewer Water Board was in favor of having the airport sewer extension, uh, placed in there, uh, no matter if it was B or C, uh, and would prefer the B, which is except, or keeping most of projects, uh, in the plan.
Yeah, yeah, so Jared, you want to go ahead and introduce Bob?
Yeah, so in the audience here tonight, thank you for patiently waiting. Uh, this is Bob. Bob is the owner of Alliance Industries. Um, he is looking to locate his business to the city. Um, had stumbled upon, uh, the property on Runway Drive, um, and then I've been working with him, his realtor, um, to hopefully get this project underway. So Bob, I don't know if you want to step up to the podium, you could talk just a little bit about your project and, um, what you're planning to do.
Uh, the four gallons of coffee I drink every day have started to wear off, so forgive me a little bit. No, thank you. Um, uh, real briefly, kind of the scope of the project. I mean, uh, we had an ownership change at Alliance Industries this, this year, um, and, and it went very well. Um, we are still leasing space in the former Waupaca plant. Um, quite honestly, uh, you know, we started this company, my father and my uncle, in this community forty-four years ago. Honestly, the intention at, at first, the strategic plan that I put together with my board is we strongly considered moving this, folding it down into either our Appleton campus or our Manasha campus. Um, you know, the more we looked at that, um, I can say that I pivoted hard. I'm a sailor, so I'll say I tacked my sails quick, knowing that we have a really good crew of people that worked for us in this plant, in this department. Average tenure is seventeen years. Um, and we have our largest customer, Waupaca Foundry here. And this is where our company started. And since then, really put together a plan to really reinvigorate our commitment to the city of Waupaca. So what does that mean? That means right now, I have, uh, you know, we put the offer on the land. Um, I did say thirteen thousand a year roughly, eight years. We'll put the hundred and four hundred and five thousand on the table right away to help this, uh, right out of the gate. Uh, year one, and there's no guarantees, but the guarantee on year one, I've been working with builders right now. We're talking about taxes and assess tax value. The plan just on land improvements and building is somewhere between two and a two and a half million. That's on a phase one that I would like to get going very quickly with. My goal would be to be operational May first, June first, somewhere in there. We are looking at a phase two where I would be bringing, creating capacity, but bringing a, uh, uh, product line we do out of our Manasha plant to create room down there. But bringing that up here, that would probably be just on an infrastructure taxable basis and other three million of, of land improvements for, for taxable land improvements. And there is a phase three that, you know, I'd ask for some confidentiality, but I'm approaching Waupaca Foundry. And I, I believe that there's a phase three where we're really growing our relationship with them and then some, some customers in the Wasan, western part of the state. So I see my vision on this is definitely next year, two million dollars worth of, of land improvements and building improvements. And somewhere around, and that's, I know the terms we talk about in this term, but probably a capital investment over the next two to three years and an additional ballpark somewhere between a five and a ten mil, million, um, in building expansion. So we're excited. Um, I know those, you know, these things take time and I'm just looking for some direction from the city and the council. Um, I have, the banks are ready to go, the builders are ready to go. Once the guy gets his corn off, I could be, I could be doing excavating and we could be digging ground and, and putting buildings up. So I'm just looking for direction. I know timing and the bid process and approval. Um, I can't pull the, uh, uh, I can't write the PO for the first two million dollars until I have some direction and a sense of timing. So, but we're back and we're, we never left, but we're very committed to the community and pretty excited about it, so. Sorry to take up the time.
It's fine.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks Bob. Yeah, we appreciate you obviously sticking it out with us, but also, uh, bringing out a, a really cool project to our community. And just to. That's great. Yeah, no, that's fine. No, that's great. And so the idea, Justin, was we have water that runs all the way down runway drive. Do you want to just explain how we came up with this?
Uh, well, we have water and so that anybody can connect to water, we do not have sewer. So then you have to look at an alternate route and septics are not allowed, uh, for new builds in the city. Um, so to get any kind of development out there is going to take a substantial project, so we just think it's time now.
Okay. Okay, um, and just to kind of maybe answer a question Bob you may have, I know you said you were looking for some direction. So just so you understand the process, so our capital budget workshop, nothing gets voted on tonight. Uh, we kind of present all these things and a budget and a, hopefully something that makes sense. And then council over the next week or so can ask questions or up until it passes in November, can ask questions, express concern, whatever it may be. Um, so, you know, I, I would, I guess, just ask city council if there's anything, uh, of concern um, or within the sewer plan or wastewater treatment plant, revenue bond plan, to ask questions in the next couple of weeks. And, and knowing that it won't be formalized until the budget passes in November, just wanted to be clear about that. And sorry, can you go to the mic?
Um, just for, uh, when we've talked about this, for my planning purposes, if it were to pass, what would be the, a, a normal, no guarantee timeline for things to be able to happen? Best estimate.
So if it was, if the funding was approved through the budget, I guess I would lean on Justin as far as the construction process for that type of a project.
Uh, I think we could get biddable plans ready, uh, by February.
Biddable plans by February and.
Hopefully a contractor on board by April, May.
So does that mean the contractor chosen and then needs to schedule the work? By May or April, I mean, and I'm not pressing, I'm just.
Right, I mean, that, it's an aggressive schedule, but that's typically how we operate. Right, I mean, that, it's an aggressive schedule, but that's typically how we operate, is we get our bids, our plans and our bids over the winter time, and then we break ground by spring, which is May.
Okay. We can have that further discussion on your timeline versus how our timeline works together. I mean, if you get the guarantee that if we do decide to go forward with the sewer project, there isn't any reason why you can't start your project before ours is, ours is completed either.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, we can have that discussion at a further day.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just trying to, you know, think of terms of planning and then letting our biggest customer, Wapaka, know that as well too, so.
Absolutely.
So April, we'll have this done, you think? Thank you.
Thank you for considering Wapaka.
Thanks Bob. Justin, anything else on the utilities?
Nope.
Okay. Any questions on anything else council members related to the capital projects? Don't all raise your hands at once. Oh, we do have one. All right, Henry, go ahead.
We're gonna keep you another twenty minutes. No. I don't know how the other Alders feel about this, but this is gonna be a revenue bond. It's utility, it's rate supported. It seems to me that in November, right, we're gonna have our utility budgets pretty good shape, that we could get going in November, planning and, right? And maybe even get the bid document out in January. And you can put stuff in there, right, like completion date and all that kind of stuff. I, I don't know if it would take a separate mayor, a separate decision outside of the normal budgets, but to try to show good faith and move as rapidly as possible. It's not a tax-based thing, where we have to set our tax, you know, be concerned about that.
Yeah, Henry, thanks for that. We will be able to get you more information once we work a little bit more with the developer. So, yeah, sounds good. I know it's been a long night, guys, a, a long night. And we actually had one other item that we put on the agenda tonight, and I would ask if Justin's okay with this, that we just put this off until our, our next meeting?
I'd be crushed.
Yeah, I know. So, I mean, I do think it's important though, this, this item, so we're, we're not gonna table it, but obviously, it goes along with the capital improvement plan as we move forward. But again, I think we're at our, you know, we're at three hours and fifteen minutes, and, and we try to stay under two hours, so I think we're a little bit over. You guys will all get your overtime pay in the next check. So, Aaron, anything else that you want to? That's all, Mayor. Just if anyone has any questions, contact us at any time. Okay. So we'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Olson and second by Corey that we adjourn till our next regular scheduled meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried.